We have set up our meeting this evening so that we can flow right into our town council meeting. We set it up so that we start at 6 o'clock with the Spencer Trust Fund. Immediately following that, we start with our town council meeting. So I am calling the Barrington Town Council meeting to order at 6:33 PM on January 11th, 2021. All members of the town council are present. And I just wanted to say a word about, you know, what happened last week. Before the pandemic, in the normal course, we would hold our meetings at the town halls, you know, council chambers, and we would open the meeting by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. We stopped doing that during, over the Zoom meetings, but I think, especially given that it's going to go on for a little longer, and especially in light of the attack on the Capitol last week that led to the death of a Capitol police officer and others, I think it's time to go back to doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Our country is far from perfect, but it's worth protecting as we work to become the kind of nation that we aspire to. So with that in mind, I've asked Jim to put an image of the flag on, if he can, Jim. And I would invite folks at home to join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, everyone. The first item on our agenda is announcements, and I'd ask our town manager, Jim, could you take us through those, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to clarify the motor tax, motor vehicle tax bills. As many of you know, the state budget has continued to phase out the motor vehicle tax, which is what we're waiting for before we send out our bills. So the bills are being prepared. They will be in the mail this Thursday. State law requires us to bill quarterly, so you will receive four bills. Your first quarter's bill will be due March 15th. Your second quarter bill will be due March 30th. Your third quarter, June 15th, and your fourth quarter, June 30th. In order to give our residents as much flexibility as possible, if you do not pay your first quarter by June 15th, there will be no penalty as long as it's paid by the time the second quarter is due on June 30th. And same goes for June, June 15th will be no penalty as long as you pay it by June 30th. So ostensibly, people have the option of paying two semi-annual installments in March and June if they so choose. So those bills will be out Thursday. People should be getting them over the weekend or early next week. The AAA has once again recognized Barrington with the Community Traffic Safety Award for having 60 years with no pedestrian fatalities. Last we checked, we were the, and I assume we still are, the longest municipality without a fatality, pedestrian fatality. So they'll be making a presentation to the police department within the next few weeks. Monday, this coming Monday, January 18th, is Martin Luther King Jr. holiday, and all town offices will be closed. This is the second year of the Barrington Heritage Hall of Fame. Our inaugural class has been published. We haven't had a ceremony yet. Hopefully, in the coming year, we'll have a ceremony for both the inaugural class and the second class. We have a selection committee that has been put together, and applications, which are very simple forms to fill out, are due by the end of January, and we will, any applications that were submitted last year that were not selected will be resubmitted this year automatically for consideration. So those applications are due on January 30th, and we will present the list for the council approval by the March meeting. Special election for state bonds will be held on March 2nd. The last day to register the vote is January 31st. The last day to apply for mail ballot is Tuesday, February 9th. As with the general election, there'll be early voting. It will run, we'll have one polling place in Barrington. It will be Town Hall, and early voting will take place from Wednesday, February 10th until March 1st, Monday, March 1st, it will end. And then the polls will be open on Tuesday, March 2nd, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Once again, that will be held in the Town Hall council chambers. And if you have, need any information on that, you can go to vote.ri.gov, and they'll have all the information available for you on that. And finally, something we publicize a lot, and hopefully everyone here has heard, we're fortunate that in cooperation with Paleno Properties, Rhode Island Department of Health, and Rhode Island National Guard, to establish the COVID-19 pop-up testing site. That site is located at the former Joseph A. Bank storefront in Barrington Shopping Plaza. It opens tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. It'll run Tuesday through Saturday for the next two weeks, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And we're looking forward to get a lot of asymptomatic testing, and that's important to point out. If you are symptomatic, you need to call, make an appointment. We don't want anyone coming into the test site that is symptomatic. So it's for asymptomatic testing only, and it's, once again, this Tuesday, starting tomorrow through Saturday, and next week, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And if anyone has any questions, they can call Town Hall. That's all. Oh, and one last announcement is, today, we are fortunate to bring on our new tax assessor onboard, Ken Mallett. He's a former tax assessor in Cumberland and Warwick, and he began his work today with us, and he's going to be a great part of our team, so I'd like to welcome Ken to the team. Ken, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President, council members. I will serve the residents of Barrington with distinction and honor, and I look forward to working with many of you to bridge the gap and help bring some continuity to the town of Cumberland. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
One thing, Ken, you're in Barrington now.
Oh, what did I say? I'm sorry. I just, didn't I say Barrington? No?
That's excusable.
Sorry. I apologize. Jim's been keeping me very busy today. I think I put in about 14 hours already, and it's still going strong.
Welcome aboard, Ken. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jim. Welcome, Ken.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is what we call a consent agenda. This is really a series of items. These are items, if you're looking at the agenda marked with an asterisk. We consider them routine, and they can be enacted by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen requests that separate, to separate it out, and the request is for good cause, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So what we'll do is, if anyone wants to remove anything from the consent agenda, we'll do that, then we'll vote on the remaining consent agenda and come back to the ones removed. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Yes, Rob?
Yes, I'd like to remove Agenda Item Number 10.
Okay. Anything else?
I'd like to remove Number 4.
Okay.
And then from the department reports, the planning, fire, library, and assessor. Each is a short, each is a short one. And 9, the solar lease.
Planning, fire, what was the other one?
Library and tax assessor.
Okay, and then 9. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Other members of the council, anything? Okay. So, yes, Carl, please.
I would pull the DPW report for November.
Okay. I'm sorry?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, everything else from the consent agenda.
Okay, so with the exception of Items 4, 5, 9, and 10, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Seconded.
I'll second it.
A motion made by Counselor Breyer and seconded by Counselor Costello. Any further discussion? Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. First one removed was approve reappointments, boards and commissions. That was Jacobs, I think. Jacob?
Yes. I don't have anything specific from them, but because many of the boards and commissions listed there never had a vacancy, I wanted to be able to vote separately on them. Not each of them individually, just separately from the consent agenda. Still as a block is fine.
Okay. Anything else on Item 4 from any other counselor? Do I hear a motion to approve the reappointments to boards and commissions as presented?
So moved.
Made by Vice President Humm. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Costello. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Abstained.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries 4, 2, 0, 2 with one abstention. Next item to be removed is Item 5, the monthly department reports for October and November. Counselor Breyer?
Yes, so first, from the planning report, I had one question, actually, I guess, two questions. The first is, I was curious, and looking at the social media report and the statistics, whether that includes the town of properties, or if it's the town of the fire department and police department on the social media properties. I was just curious, and if it does not include all of them, if we could also see the social media impact of the other properties.
Also, Breyer, that only includes the social media platforms that Deborah Page Trim in planning utilizes. I can ask the fire and police and those other departments that have separate websites if they could report their numbers on their, on their monthly reports in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
You also had a question about the library director, I believe.
Oh, well, I have another planning.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to see if we could get an update on the Take It Outside Grants Program. I wonder how much is still available. I know we were very fortunate to secure money from the state to do that, and I've seen some of the pictures of what businesses are doing, but I just wondered if more is available and kind of what's going on with that.
I can fill you in on that. The town was able to assist 22 different entities. I counted them up, 11 of them were restaurants, 6 were retail, and 5 other, other being the library, Bay Spring Community Center backyard area for performances, and a couple, I think, 2 churches and the temple happening. And the total amount awarded out was almost $59,000 out of the $60,000.
Good. Thanks. So next, the fire report. And I know a couple months ago, we discussed the old fire truck. It's great that we have the new ladder truck in, but there was question about whether we'd be able to sell the former one or potentially donating it to another department up north, and I was just curious what happened with the old truck.
Mr. Fire Chief, I was able to put that on a nationwide auction site at no cost to us, and we received $50,000 from a fire department, combination department in Washington State. And speaking with them is, as late as last week, the truck has made it there very safely. It has been operating, and they're quite happy with their purchase.
Great. For the library, I just wanted to highlight one of the programs they're running, which is the Book Club in a Bag, which just sounded like a really terrific program for them to be offering, and I just wanted to help get the word out. I don't know if Director Chin is here and can share a little more about it, but either way, I think it's a great program.
Is Director Chin on, Kristen?
He is, and she should be allowed to talk.
Chris, you should be unmuted.
Okay, there I am. Hi. Thank you, Jacob. It is a really great program. It's something that we have been planning for a while, and actually purchased the books pre-COVID maybe, and now we're just getting it up and running. But, so we are starting out very small with 7 titles, 10 copies to a bag, plus a reader's book discussion guide. So it is very exciting. I talked to our reference department today, and some of the criteria is or that it's a book that can be discussed on many levels, many, many different topics. It's, you know, not generally on the bestsellers list because we like to have paperbacks, and that is for 2 reasons. One is cost, and the other one is portability. 10 hardcover books can be a little bit, you know, a little bit heavy, but it's a program that a lot of other libraries have, and we've just wanted to do it for a while.
Thank you.
Welcome.
You mentioned the planner. You also asked about the tax assessor.
Oh, yes. That, I was just curious what the timing is for folks to be able to check what their 2020 revaluation was, when that gets all loaded into the system and people can see.
Good evening, councilors. Again, Ken Mallett, and I am in the town of Barrington, so we're all straight on that. The reevaluation is underway. I actually spoke to the vendor today, and I will be meeting with him this week. We're looking at living within the means as far as notifications were supposed to be mailed in around March 10th. If anything, it will be sooner rather than later. He indicated to me that he's just about ready for the assessor to start checking values, and if we concur, then those notices could go out as early as February. It'll give the taxpayers approximately 2 weeks to appeal their value, and then it becomes my problem as soon as we certify the tax roll. So anybody that still is in dispute would then come before the tax assessor with an appeal and would go the normal course of business.
So initially, folks are able to appeal to Northeast revaluation? Is that, okay?
Absolutely. It's called an informal appeal process, where they appeal directly to the vendor, and the vendor will take their appeal and listen to their comments, and if there are changes that need to be made, will make those changes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it for me on the reports. You're muted, President Carroll.
Excuse me. Counselor Costello, you mentioned DPW. Did you?
I did, and I just, in keeping with past practice, I wanted to note that we had 8 trees removed and 1 tree planted in the month of November, and that is a continuing deficit we've had over some extended period of time. I am hopeful that we will be able to address it for various reasons in the coming year.
If I might just address that for a second, we do have our tree farm we're working, and once the planting season comes around, we should see that deficit change considerably.
Great. Any other questions on the department reports? Do I hear a motion to accept the monthly department reports as presented?
So moved.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Costello. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Next item that was raised was Counselor Breyer, Item 9, Agreement with Briggs Solar. Please.
I was just hoping to hear a bit more about that. It looked like it's a renewal of a sublease, and I just, I wasn't clear from reading through the lease, why we're in a secondary lease position, or if they just clarified.
This is Mike Grisillo. Maybe I can answer that. Back in 2017, the town entered into a lease with a solar energy producing company to receive energy utility bill credits, basically, on our electric bills, and that project, that solar farm, is taking place in East Greenwich. And in order for the town to receive these energy credits, it is necessary for the town to have a legal relationship with the property. And the way that legal relationship is established is through a sublease, which gives the town the right to go on the property at any time to inspect, et cetera. This is the way it's being handled all over the state because these solar farms are not necessarily in the towns in which the energy credits are being produced. So that's why it's there.
Any other questions about that? Okay, I hear a moment, a motion to approve the agreement with Briggs Solar.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Vice President Humm, vote.
Aye.
Okay. Counselor Breyer? Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Next item is Item 10, and that was Vice President Humm. Rob?
Yeah, so I asked for this one to be taken off. I love 5K road races. I think they're terrific events for many, many reasons, but I have some concerns hosting a live 5K event in March, which, you know, as it stands now, we're in the depths of a pandemic, and we're not in a good place with it overall. I don't know where we're going to be in March, but an event like this makes me a bit nervous and concerned that it could be a super-spreader event. I have no doubt that the YMCA and the town will go through all proper protocols, make sure that everything is done as safely as possible, but it's still something that makes me a bit nervous. I don't know if there's anybody at the meeting tonight who might be able to speak to it, to talk about some of the precautions, maybe in addition to the sheet that was attached to the agenda materials, which is essentially the COVID screening test. But I do know people in the running industry who have been doing virtual events, and I don't know the status of those types of events at this point, but, you know, again, we're only 2 months away from this, and, you know, as far as I can tell, as a layperson, there's no indication that we're going to be in any safer of a place in March than we are now.
Is there anyone from the YMCA who might be able to answer that?
I don't think so, but if I can jump in, I did talk to Mike at the YMCA, and they are ready to adjust, as you can see on the applications, as was originally scheduled for December. They pushed it to March. They're willing to push it to the right. They're also looking at perhaps having it virtual or having staggered starts, so I don't think this thing is locked in by any means, and certainly, we can turn it off if things stay as they are right now and there's no ability to put further constraints on them. Michelle, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think that that is correct. This is a very small race. I talked to Mike Squartrito, and he said they have about 25 runners. Again, I do agree that if the situation warrants, they are more than happy to move the date. This is just, it's not a huge event for them, it's just something, they typically have run this at the Newman YMCA in Seacoak, and they couldn't run it there because of the conditions in Massachusetts, so they wanted to move it to Rhode Island. So I think there's a lot of flexibility there.
I'd like to make a suggestion that we approve this application, subject to compliance with then-existing state emergency orders and emergency orders of the town manager. Does that make sense? In that case, if, depending on where we are and where the guidance is, our manager could say, well, we're not ready for that just yet. Counselor Brown?
Yeah, I like, I like the sound of that a lot. I shared Vice President Humm's concerns when I first read it. I was thinking, road race, you know, I don't know. And I was about to call the Y to ask what they're doing, and then I saw the sheet that they had attached, and then I got an email from another race director about Rhode Island Department of Health telling them that they couldn't hold their race, and it made me realize that really the Rhode Island Department of Health, I think, should be in a position to authorize these. I don't know if because of their size, and Michelle, maybe you know, I don't know if because of the size not being that large, if they don't have to get Department of Health approval, but I think that might be the way to make sure that everybody in the community is safe, is if RIDO signs off on it, I think we should sign on.
I have regular conversations with Neil Heighton at RIDO on these types of things, went to open basketball courts, that type of thing, so I'll be sure to follow up with the Department of Health, and we'll follow any guidance that they provide us.
Anyone else?
Yeah, is that an upper limit of 25 people? Is that a hard limit, or is that just the estimate?
It's the estimate, but they also don't usually have, they don't usually have spectators at this event. That's how small it is. It's just 25 runners who come together, and it's to, you know, promote this annual race that they have, and that's it.
I just wanted to comment, since I was the one who brought it up. I think, Mr. Carroll, what you said a few moments ago, in conjunction with what Mr. Breyer just said about looping in the DOH, I think is an excellent idea, and perhaps that's the way we should go.
So if I can take a shot at this, I'll make a motion to approve Item 10, the road race, Bayside YMCA Road Race, subject to compliance with all of the governor's state emergency orders and with the town manager's emergency orders, and subject to the town manager confirming with Rhode Island Department of Health.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is, that was the consent agenda. Next item is to discuss and act on acceptance of minutes from the town council meetings of November 2 and December 7. If anyone, one of the new counselors is, has not had a chance to review those, you could certainly abstain, but if you've had a chance to see that, you can certainly vote on that, and anyone can raise concerns with that. Are there any issues with these minutes? and anyone can raise concerns with that. Are there any issues with these minutes? Seeing none. Is there, uh I'll make a motion to approve to accept the minutes from the town council meetings of November two and December seven, twenty twenty. Is there a second? Uh councillor Brier? You're muted.
Some somebody's from the public's hand is raised.
Okay. Robin? If you could unmute.
I'm looking for that hand right now. I see it's raised, but I can't find it. Oh, it's um.
Nope.
There's sixty-six people uh attending, so it takes me a little while to scroll through.
On my screen, the hands raised go to the top.
Yeah, uh it's Robin Gardner.
Yep.
So Robin is unmuted.
Robin, please go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
You can hear me okay?
Uh we've done. You're got a little feedback, but.
Okay. How about now?
Better.
Okay. Um I just wanted to make sure that everybody has the email that I sent.
Okay, so you're I'm not sure what email you're talking about.
I'm talking about the town tree at Forham Lock.
This is Mary. This is Mary under correspondence.
Oh, right.
Ms Gardner, put in correspondence, town tree, Robin Lee Gardner, if you'd like to look at them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, did you all get to read it?
We did, um but Ms Gardner, we were actually talking about the minutes of a different meeting. Um.
Well, I just don't want it be skipped.
Well, we've already seen it and and read it. If you'd like to raise it again, you certainly can at the public comment portion of the meeting, which is coming up shortly.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh anyone else? Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the town council meetings of November two and December seven. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Conway. Uh Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councillor Brier?
Aye.
Councillor Conway?
Aye.
Councillor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Next, um item on the agenda is um discussion with community and customer manager Jacques Alfonso from National Grid. Uh we've had a uh you know, a lot of um power outages in town and we wanted to be able to address that. Oh, I'm sorry. Um right, Vice President Hum will be recusing from this, right?
Yes, I'll, I submitted my recusal form in my um day job. I'm an attorney and um uh National Grid is is a client of mine in my law firm, so I'll be recusing. Thank you.
Um but in in light of the the power failures that we've had, um which have an impact in a variety of ways, there are some people who are health compromised where it becomes really a matter of life and death. And then especially during COVID, there are a lot of folks who are working from home where it really can affect their livelihood. Uh we wanted to address this, try to understand why we have these, it seems like more than the average um power number of power failure and what, if anything, we as a town and National Grid can do about it. So I I invited uh Mr. Alfonso here from National Grid and he was kind enough to to come along and so, Mr. Alfonso, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and um can you hear me okay? Have to do the usual check. And um and now on behalf of National Grid, thank you all for the opportunity to be here and speak to you all um and respond to the um to the to the requests and the questions that were were posed to National Grid. Um again, my name is Jacques Alfonso. I'm the community customer manager uh for the East Bay and the Quinick Island. I guess you can summarize my my position as the account manager, municipal liaison for the municipalities in the East Bay, Quinick Island, which includes the the town of Barrington. Um and I also have some of the larger council, large sensitive council, lifespan hospitals, um Raytheon Navy and so forth. Um and with that, I did put together, um I'm I'm hoping a quick presentation that'll help that'll help uh with the discussion. And there we, there you go. Uh can everybody see this? Okay, great. With that, I'm gonna get going and full disclosure, up about a few hours ago, I had this as January eleven, two thousand and twenty, so that was my mistake for the year. Hopefully it won't happen again. Um but one of the things I wanted to do as as starting off in in response is just kind of uh create a baseline for us with respect to what an electric system looks like um in general and then kind of show where we are for for the town of Barrington. Um so this is probably the simplest description of what an electric distribution system looks like. Um electricity is generated at um a power plant generating station and as you can tell, this is probably an older image because now there's a lot more distributed generation, solar and and wind um winds uh capabilities for generation. Um so hopefully you'll see that in future um pictures, but again, electricity is generated, then it's transmitted over electric transmission lines. These are the high voltage, very large towers you see out there um along highways and rightaways and so forth and typically in Rhode Island, that's anything sixty-nine KV and above. Um I believe the transmission line that feeds the Barrington area is is one fifteen KV. Um and then those transmission lines then connect to substations and what substations do is they take the high voltage and lower to a lower distribution level of voltage. Um so again, if the voltage gets lowered uh at the substation and then from there it um it cascades throughout the municipality. Um and what you see here, the um the poles with the three lines, that's our three-phase primary lines that go off throughout the main roads. Um and then what you see tapped off of these three-phase lines is single-phase lines, primary voltage that then feed the neighborhoods and so forth. Um and these primary lines and those single um primary lines, again, they get lower to a um a lo- um an even lower final voltage that feeds and services the homes at one twenty, uh one twenty, two forty. Um and the uh the primary voltage lines in the municipal uh of Barrington is thirteen KV. So again, this is just a high-level um description of what a distribution system looks like. And this next slide is pretty much, again, very high-level where we are for the town of Barrington. And the town of Barrington has approximately six thousand eight hundred sixty-seven customers. Um it's it's primarily served by three distribution feeders, three thirteen KV feeders, the five F one, the four F one and the four F two. Uh the five F one is served by uh a substation in the town of Warren and that's located right here, that number five. The four F two and the four F one is serviced by um a Barrington substation located here. Um and one thing to note, even though we have the the five F one that comes out of the uh Warren substation feeds this area, Rumstick area and northeast area of uh Barrington, um there's also a subtransmission line, a twenty-three KV line that actually energizes that Barrington substation. That's one thing to keep in mind as I go forward. Um and just some general other stats on the three distribution lines that we have in Barrington. Um the lowest one distance-wise in circuit miles is twenty-two miles, where the uh um the longest one is about thirty-two miles. Um and that sub T line is approximately five miles in total because it does uh continue on into East Providence, but from Warren to uh to Barrington is about two miles if I'm not mistaken. So one of the first questions that was asked is why's why's Barrington's experiencing so many outages? What is going on? Um and in having conversations with engineering, operations, um it twenty twenty amongst other reasons was was a tough year with respect to the number of storms that we've had. Um and with that said, the main driver for the the reliability concerns of last year was primarily driven by windstorms and tree damages. Um and it's and and another one was lightning and some unknowns, I think we'll always have the unknowns, whether it's a major event or or blue sky day. But that is the leading uh leading factor with respect to the reliability that was experienced in Barrington last year. Um just some keynotes here, since two thousand and seventeen, outages caused by trees has been the main driver, feed outages in Barrington. Uh trees caused outages doubled starting in two thousand and seventeen. Um in twenty twenty alone, um more than uh the winds, um wind-related storms more than doubled from the previous years. Um and in twenty twenty, again, currently we're at ninety-five percent of customers impacted by major events was fallen trees, broken limbs, again, tree-related events, tree-related, windstorm-related. Um they pretty much went hand in hand last year. Um and just in normal blue sky days, um because a- again, I think the concern was just the number of outages and just some of those large in large outages that impact majority of Barrington. Uh we still have outages and and issues that come up during blue skies days. Um and those leading uh uh contributors are animals, fail devices, lightning, tree-related and motor vehicle accidents. And just for animal, for an example, that was a, I know we had probably the latest one that I'm familiar with is the Osprey outage that occurred at the um Police Cove, that parking lot area right near the bridge as you go in towards uh the town of Warren. Um but again, this kind of, again, in talking with the engineering um operations, it's it's winds and tree-related outages. Which leads into the second question that was asked uh for me to respond to today. And that is, what plans does National Grid have to um fix or upgrade or fix, avoid too many outages? Um and I have two slides on this. And the first one is our vegetation management program. Um annually, we're budgeted for about ten to eleven million um for a vegetation management program that is across Rhode Island. Um and there are two main components to the veg management program that I just want to highlight today. One is our enhanced hazard tree mitigation. That is where either we're told or we notice or we're we're out there and we see um a tree that is infected, that is uh dead or dying or um it's jeopardizing. Again, once it does fall, to uh to take out a a primary distribution line or subtransmission line, that is one that we work with the municipality or the state or even a um a property owner to uh take down the tree. Um and that's one that I just want to add here too is it, that is um also driven by, we have a local reliability program or or committee within National Grid that's uh pretty much overseen by engineering and operations and all different departments and they provide a lot of input into this, along with uh getting feedback from municipalities, working with the tree warden. That committee also puts a lot of uh effort into to kind of highlight the areas where we have um an opportunity or we have issues with uh with uh with trees, hazard trees. And then primarily what we have is our tree trimming maintenance cycle. It's a it's a four-year cycle and program that we go through, um we uh we go to each feeder, each line and uh and we trim. We trim around our primary lines, secondary lines um to uh to get the branches away from the lines so it can help avoid outages. But it could also help um in making this a safe area for uh our operations crews to respond and and maintain the lines if there was an outage or if uh new services are needed or upgrades and so forth. Um again, that's every four years. We actually completed our tree trimming uh maintenance cycle for the town of Barrington in March of twenty twenty. Um and that's something that, again, we work closely with the municipality and the tree warden, the state and again homeowners, uh property owners, because again, and that's one thing I I've kind of saved it towards the end of the presentation, but we don't own any trees. So we need permission by the tree owners, which again, municipality, state or property owners uh to trim the trees or remove the trees if needed. Um and one thing to kind of mention here, and this kind of, there's a picture to the side that kind of shows um kind of the before and after of what our trimming would look like. Um I think we've all seen tho- those Pac-Man trees around um around the lines and so forth, but as you can see, it's a certain zone that we're allowed to work in tree trimming the trees. Um and anything beyond that, again, we need permission, but 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 we we are restricted and um and I'm not say here saying that we need more. Um but again, as you can see, some of the after pictures, um there's still there's still in some situations um trees that or branches on the trees that even if they were to fail or they were to fall, um they could potentially take down the line. So even though we're doing tree trimming, which does help, um there still remains, um again, with the right conditions of wind speed, um leaves on the trees, heavy snow, there's still the chance of the impact that trees, even if we trim them, that they could damage the lines and cause outages. The other thing that we're doing is is kind of looking into the future and this is the future slash current. Um one of the things that engineering has done is completed an east-based study. Um and this is a a study that encompasses East Providence, Barrington, Warren and Bristol. Um and but what I have here is is key to Barrington, so where some of the 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 third slide, I think, had showing the three feeders in Barrington with the study and once it's completed, Barrington will end up having five feeders um in the town of Barrington. So where there was twenty-two to thirty-two miles of feeders, three lines, uh we're gonna, we're gonna separate that into five feeders, which gives us a lot more flexibility to isolate um issues and damages uh caused by outages, trees, motor vehicle accidents and so forth. Um because at National Grid, we do have a policy in operations to switch before fix. So as crews go out there and responding to an incident, an outage, an interruption, um they assess and if they're able to isolate the issue before fixing it to minimize the impact to a larger number of customers, they do that. They switch before they fix. Um so so there will be some improvements with respect to liability and flexibility once this project is done. Um currently, the reason why it's not in construction yet is because we're we're finalizing details on the East Providence side and the Warren side. Um in in most um most impacting or related to Barrington because some of the new feeders or the new feeders are pretty much gonna be coming from the Warren substation. We're closely working around DOT on as they are rebuilding the bike bridges um so we can have um conduits in the bridges so the feeders can go through the bridges um and over to Barrington. And I think I think it was two or now three years ago, there was an a sub-subtransmission outage on one of the poles that came down right on the Warren side of uh of the bridge there. So I think that'll be an improvement uh going forward. Um the feeders in this project will see also a capacity increase to the area of Barrington. So again, more customers can be added on, more equipment and so forth. Um and one of the things I want to highlight here is that with this project planned, this study, um we are looking to retire the Barrington substation. Uh with the upgrades to the Warren substation and other substations outside of Barrington, I think we're in a position where engineering is gonna retire the substation. Um so that's something to look forward to and and hopefully the near future. Again, we're just finalizing details and plans on Warren and East Providence. Which leads me to the third question is, what can Barrington's municipality government do to support National Grid in their efforts? I think just with the fact that you all, um with COVID in twenty twenty being what they are and and your comments and and introduction of more people are working from home, um more children are being homeschooled and 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 learning remotely and so forth. Um I think just the fact that you asked us to attend and respond and and kind of be held accountable and just provide information, I think I think that's key. I think that's a great start just with respect to communication. Um communication and coordination, uh not only with with just communicating and educating and responding, but then also with the upcoming uh study, the projects. Um and just in general with emergencies and weather events and so forth, we have a community liaison that's assigned to the municipality um during a major events and storms to respond to be the point of contact with municipality. So I think communication coordination is key. Um I think second, or just as important, is need help finding tree issues. Um you all know your town's better than 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 we do, even though we have some employees that work in National Grid that live in Barrington, you all know where those issues are. So I think it's just working with our forestry supervisors and operations and even myself to just highlight um hazard trees or maybe spot tree trimming that needs to be done ahead of the four-year cycle. Um again, we're we're always open to those conversations. I think our forestry supervisors have have open relationships, good relationships with the DPW directors and 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 tree warden. Um so but any feedback and any information on that that we should be aware of is is appreciated. And again, it's just a reminder that we don't own every tree, so I think it's just an uh it's just a reminder to, I think, just if possible, to work with us in mitigating the tree concerns and some of those that we have out there. Recently had one of your municipal neighbors where there's is some private trees growing into our lines and we haven't been given permission to trim the lines. So um one of the outages, I think it was, I'm sorry, one of the storms, I think it was one of the November storms of last year, um those trees caused an outage and we were out there and we had to trim the lines a little bit and got the customers back up, but but again, they do have an impact, so so I think, again, just cooperation and working with us as town has always done, um I think goes a long way. And um and just a reminder, call in every outage in emergency. Please don't rely on your neighbors um to call in an outage. You may have a completely separate issue on a separate feeder and line, so um please call in every outage in a in emergency um. um, please call in every outage in a, in emergency um, for yourselves. Um, then with that, it always helps us too, because then it'll be an official record, so as concerns and issues come up, we could always go back and look at those calls and kind of respond to. Um, and it just, again, there's, there's quite a little bit of gas in Barrington too, so there's that line to call in any issues and then our general customer service line. Um, so again, I think just kind of summarize this is just communication and coordination as as we move forward. And just lastly, um, I always put this together in some of my presentations, there's many ways to stay informed for the municipality.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oops, sorry. Um, there's, there's various ways to stay informed nowadays, especially with the electric outage map, our mobile app, email alerts and so forth, so I just remind everybody that there are many ways to be informed as when the emergency, um, I'm sorry, when a weather event is is ramping up, when it occurs um, and so forth and being up to date. And one of the things I I just want to mention that was kind of uh, highlighted before was concerns with um, with um, with residents and and homeowners that um, have health issues, um, whether that be in oxygen tanks and so forth, we do prior to, as we, we monitor the weather in the system constantly and um, twenty-four seven, and one of the things that we do is when we know that there's um, a weather event coming our way, um, whether it's days in advance, a hurricane or nor'easter, or one that's kind of developing um, the day of or the night of, if it's, if, if it if it warrants, we do notify our critical customers, our sensitive customers, um, those that we have records for. So if there are residents out there that have concerns, health issues, um, call in, make a note on your account, that's that eight hundred three two two number right there. Um, and just make sure that we're aware that you do have um, have um, health concerns and issues. Um, but we do have a restoration protocol that we do follow. Um, our tier one accounts, which are primarily hospitals are a priority, followed by police stations, fire stations, nursing homes, um, uh, pump stations, water pump stations, uh, waste treatment plants and so forth, followed by our tier three, which is is similar to tier two, but just not as critical. So we do have processes that we follow. Um, but one of the things I mentioned before with respect to the municipality having a liaison assigned to them during an event, we're always looking for the municipalities' um, priorities, which we then feed back and then um, help uh, help restore as quickly as we can. So I I hope I touched upon that issue of concern with respect to some of the residents with health concerns and issues. Um, and with that, I am going to stop sharing and open my screen and just answer any questions that you may have. Um, I think I had ten minutes, so I hope I didn't go too fast. And um, any questions or comments, Mr. Cunha and and counsel?
Thanks to the council, I'd like to let you know that um, when there is a storm, uh, Jock can't necessarily prevent the outages, but he is in constant communication with me about um, the ETRs, the estimated time of repair, and trying to keep us posted as to what's going on and if there's any special needs we have, so the communication between Jock and and the municipal staff is is good. Um, unfortunately, it's the power outages that are the problem. Um, Jock, also, I've had a request uh, for the PowerPoint display. Could you send that to me so that we could post it for our residents?
Not a problem.
Okay. Uh, anyone from the public wish to be heard or have a question for Mr. Alfonso? I see.
Uh, Mike, I have Jerry Debold who would like to speak.
Yes, please, Mr. Debold.
Can you hear me? You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, we had an arborist on our property looking at some trees and he pointed out the fact there was a tree growing against a telephone pole, and this had been going on for quite some time. Maybe that's a question of aesthetics, but it would seem that National Grid should have noticed that. A more serious problem he pointed out was a case of a tree that was growing against one of the power lines. So that the power line didn't go between the two telephone poles, it was actually displaced partway down. And he said the result of that is that whenever there's a rain, that there is electricity conducted through the water down the side of the trunk of the tree down to the ground. So he said if anyone touched the tree, they could be electrocuted. So that neither of these two conditions took took place overnight. You know, those trees have been growing there for a long time. So we've, we, when we had the arborist there, he did some other work for us, but we immediately called National Grid and told about the hazard, and they, they actually came and cut down these, these offending trees. But my question is, since these trees have been growing there for for years, how come National Grid would never notice this? Is the problem, it would seem that the, you're not employing enough resources to the uh, to, to, to this area. Certainly in that case, I don't see how they could have ever missed this.
Well, it's, it's, I, I'd hate to, I, I can't really speak for the forestry department in that specific situation, location, but I am glad to hear that you're able to work with the arborists and the forestry. Um, I think the only thing I can kind of state right now without knowing more specifics as to the location, what happened, and talk to the forestry department. Um, again, we're on a four-year tree trimming cycle. There are a lot of trees, a lot of roadway, a lot of primary, again, just with those three feeders, we're looking at um, uh, seventy miles, give or take a primary, so the chances of something being missed or at that time not being as as critical could happen, because again, trees do grow. How much they grow in four years, I can't speak, I'm not a subject matter expert when it comes to that. But again, just to summarize that, I'm I'm glad we're able to work with them, I appreciate that. Um, but that's something I can take back to the forestry department to maybe get more information or just um, I don't know, maybe bring it to their attention.
Okay, maybe the trees are growing faster here than than people think, but anyhow, pass it on if you can, that there may be necessarily put more people on the job here.
Yeah, and and that's something where again, we um, so we have internal forestry supervisors that have, that manage the different areas and we contract all the maintenance work out. Again, we're trying to get as much as we can for what we're allotted to spend each year. Um, excuse me, but again, it is a four-year cycle and they they do the best they can, but again, it goes back to that, one of those last slides up, just the more communication and coordination that we we can have, I think that the more we can uh, go out there and be proactive to mitigate any concerns and issues out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else uh, from the public want to be heard?
I don't see any more hands, Mr. President.
Anyone from the council? Mr. Castell, sure.
Thank you for appearing today, Mr. Alfonso, I appreciate it. Uh, I think that the, the, the shorter runs, shorter feeder runs are are a real substantive hardware advantage that we're going to see, and that's a real positive move. We saw in the Barrington Times that they, there were, there were statistics quoted about the system, uh, system average interruption frequency index, interruption duration index. Relevant, because one of them will say how often the, this is a power go out, and the other one is um, is how long is it out? For a year period, for example, how many minutes do we, are are we out? How do, how does our community compare with other communities in Rhode Island, other coastal communities in particular? Especially on the duration index.
Yeah, and and um, thank you for that question, it's a great question, that, that's something I actually struggle with, with how much detailed information to put in this presentation, because SAFE and SADI can get a little bit complex and a little bit more complicated, and probably something that if I had to speak to that a little bit more, I probably would have had a subject matter expert from that department here to kind of speak to it. Um, but I, I haven't, I think that the real quick answer to that is I haven't done that level of analysis. How Barrington compares to your neighbors and other um, coastal uh, communities, but that's something I could always follow up with Mr. Cunha, provide that, that level of detail.
I, I would like that data for, for not, and not just a selected, but there must be a repository of data for the entire state, I would assume there must be reporting requirements for any utility with regard to that, right?
Yeah, we are. We, we have a service quality uh, report that we file annually with the Rhode Island PUC. That pretty much um, gives an indication how we, how we uh, work with those targets of SAFE and 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 SADI, because actually if we don't meet the target set by the state Rhode Island PUC, we actually get penalized on both of those metrics, SAFE and SADI. Um, so again, that's a report that usually comes out in May. Um, last year it came out of May, uh, May twenty twenty. I forgot the date, I have it here somewhere, but it was in May in twenty twenty, so I expect that they're scrubbing all the data from last year's uh, outages, um, all the, all the reports that they have, and they're putting together that report that's going to be filed with the Rhode Island PUC. But again, I can take it as an action item to provide, again, maybe a, a better comparison of some of the information and the impact to your neighbors.
See, I, I just, I ask because anecdotally, people who, both people who've lived here a long time and people who have moved, lived in other states, there is a perception that we have, we're out a lot more than other, other towns and and you know, other towns have water and trees and wind, and so we want to get a sense for how we measure up. The other one would be the KADI, right, the customer average interruption duration index, and so and how long. And, and could you also get that data for us as well, so we can start to compare us with other communities uh, in Rhode Island as well?
Yeah, let, let me talk to engineering department and see what I can do and put in together a summary of SADI, SAFE, KADI.
Yeah, that, that would be good. Um, do you know, and there, there's another measure in the industry, customer average interruption frequency index, that would tell us if certain parts of town are better served or worse served than others, do they get hit more or less, and do you have a sense for that for Barrington as to what, whether there are certain neighborhoods that are better served or underserved?
No, that, that I, in, in, in my analysis, if me look at information, I did not see that. But again, that's something that the engineering department would probably have more of those specifics, if if they're even tracking that. But I think that probably is just a, a little bit of manipulation of the data that they have available, um, I hope.
Is there a federal repository of data? What National Grid is doing in New York, for example, versus National Grid versus, is, there must be DOE stat, statistics we could, we could look to to sort of know where we measure up.
Federal, that I'm, I'm not familiar with, that I'm not familiar with, but I can ask.
Okay. Um, and I understand you, you did say that, that, that the state reporting requirements, your revenue is in part based upon performance?
Uh, not the revenue, but we have penalties. So for SAFE and SADI, if we don't meet those targets, uh, there are penalties, and I think they're about nine hundred and sixty thousand each max, I think that we would be responsible for, if I'm not mistaken, with, I think. Go ahead.
Is there a regulatory agency or is that set by statute? How is that, how is that?
That's Rhode Island, it's the Rhode Island PUC, the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay. Um, the other thing I was wondering is, now, and obviously, you're, I'm not the expert, uh, what kind of an overhead system do we have? Congress and town is, well, you know, if we just buried the lines, we wouldn't have so many outages. But it, but sometimes that depends upon the system you have, because there are different types of overhead systems. Is it an overhead radial electric system, is it, is it an auto loop system, what? Can you tell us anything about that or the differences between those systems?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm smiling right now, because when I started with the company fifteen years ago as an electric design engineer, that was my first question. Why don't we underground everything? Why, why? Um, and the engineer took me aside an hour later, so a few, a few field visits, I got the understanding of why. Uh, but just for simplicity sake, with respect to your question, where we are with Barrington, um, there's, there's really nothing physically stopping us from undergrounding or there's none, none of that, it, it really comes down to cost. Um, it costs so much more just to underground um, versus uh, construct overhead, that, that's something where as we as a regulated utility company, we have an obligation to provide least cost of service. Um, and that is ultimately the overhead system. Um, and because the system's already overhead, it's already constructed, for us to now go back and ask ratepayers to pay for undergrounding an existing system that works, we just don't have enough justification to uh, um, to justify the cost and the impact to ratepayers uh, when it comes to projects like that. So, so again, system wise, whether it's the, the, the radio lines, loop feeds, whatever it is, there's nothing specific to Barrington that that it would stop us from undergrounding with respect to that. Um, there are challenges in some areas where high water tables, um, there's a lot of rock ledge, um, uh, a lot of utilities in certain quarters, there's some roads on, on the Quinton that I know of that, there's just literally no room in certain streets to underground. So there's, there are some physical challenges in undergrounding, but ultimately it comes down to cost. It just costs so much more to underground, um, underground assets.
But are, aren't there different types of of above-ground um, hardware that maybe update, you know, but you've got like the simple overhead radio system, you've got an auto loop system. What kind of system do we have for overhead wires?
You, you have a typical three-phase primary um, overhead system with uh, um, single primary taps, again, feeding the neighborhoods, kind of like the description that I mentioned before. It's nothing more complex or simple as what's out there, it's a typical overhead system with poles, um, three-phase primary, secondary services, crossarms, overhead pan, pro, um, pole mounted transformers, um, uh, reclosers, and there's, there's the typical devices that we see on regular typical overhead systems, nothing more complex than any other.
I guess what I'm driving at is, are there, are there more modern overhead systems that might be less cost, but provide the reliability of an underground system or close to?
Well, I think, I think that leads into, do we have smarter devices that we can put out there? Um, but I think that would primarily require more smart meters and technology out there. We do have the automatic uh, reclosers out there, we have single-phase reclosers, so there are devices we can add to the poles that would make the system smarter. Um, again, there are costs associated with that. Um, but that is something that we're, we are doing with, again, the reclosers, um, looking at the um, um, the, the, the smart meters and so forth, so we are looking into that future type of technology for overhead systems. But, but when it comes, when it comes down to it, it's, at the end of the day, it's going to be poles and and wires uh, for an overhead system.
But the network systems are like orders of magnitude more reliable. I know you're going to have weather events and trees, I get that, but but they would be more reliable systems if they were installed, right?
It would, it would be smarter. I, I think, I think when the technology that's all connected, automatic devices and so forth, they would be smarter and provide a little bit more. But that's something that's so new and we don't have out there, and at least that I'm familiar with in Rhode Island, that it's kind of hard to say of how much of a benefit it would be based on the cost to get some of those projects going.
Great. And, and after your data, I mean, month down the road, would you, would you be willing to come back before the council, maybe three to six months? If we were able to, to, to look over whatever data is provided, if it's possible?
Yeah, whatever, whatever works for you all, if uh, if I'm invited and I have the right information. Now, uh, because you're, you're kind of leaving, you're, you're diving into the area where I'm, I'm not that much of an expert with respect to SADI, SAFE, KADI. I may tap some of the subject matter experts to attend, but again, I can definitely talk to them, um, speak to Mr. Cunha a few months and see if there's still a need and a desire for me to attend a, a future meeting.
Yeah, and I, I don't mean to pressure you too much, I'm just trying to make sure that we're relying on, on reliable data, so we know where we are, you know, and, and we have a sense, do we have the problem that we perceive we have? Um, and if so, what can we do about it, and are there, are there choices other than saying, oh, the only choice is to, to bury the lines? I think the, the shorter feeders are are definitely going to be a step in the right direction, so I appreciate that.
No, and I, and I appreciate your questions and your comments, and I think one of the things to add, and I don't think I mentioned in my presentation, twenty twenty was a heck of a year for events. I know we had, um, and again, it'll be in that official uh, service quality report, but I think we had about six major events where the year before we did not, I think I have the numbers for those. But I think for the December twenty fourth Christmas Eve and Christmas Day storm, that was our thirty, our thirtieth, our um, kind of storm event that we prepped for, um, thankfully, it wasn't a big, a major event for all of Rhode Islanders, but twenty twenty was a long year with respect to events, and, and again, getting to that number thirty, I, I hope twenty twenty is a lot friendly to all of us.
How, how, how do you guys describe like a major event, you know, like, and, and if you get one? Are there industry standards for like how many trucks you're supposed to have to service an area, or or how many workers or, you know, so just, which would, which would go to response times when we do have a major?
Yeah, and, and there are definitions that we follow, um, even with, with an interruption versus an outage. An outage is defined as an impact to a device, uh, but that doesn't mean that a customer's out. An interruption, that it, it actually is defined as, as impacting a customer, a customer's out. So there, there are definitions out there, there are terms that are very specific. Um, I know for the major storm, we follow, the state follows the IEEE thirteen sixty-six criteria for an amid, uh, major event day. Um, and there's, there's definitely more information out there on, on those specifics. That's even something that if you want, I can, I can send you some information or put in the slide for next time. Um, but there are criterias that, that with respect to definitions and terms and SAFE, SADI's that are followed. Um, again, we have a whole department that kind of looks at that information, so um, it, it's, that's something where again, specific to what was asked for this one, high level, but that could be something that we could be, spend hours and talking about this information. Or with, with the right person in front of you.
I, I, no, I really appreciate your information. I look forward to the follow-up on the, on both the data and also some of the, just the tactical that we talked about, and really just taking the time to come out and talk to you today.
Uh, thank, thank you for having me and thank you for the questions, I appreciate it. And hopefully for the.
I have two very brief questions, if that's okay. Um, thank you so much for coming back and being a part of our meeting. Um, I guess one of the questions I think was around the liaison that you mentioned, and I'm not sure if that's you specifically, um, or another liaison, but if that liaison serves on our energy and resilience or a conservation commission boards, and that may be a question for Jim Cunha.
Uh, they do not. I, I can tell you because I'm the liaison for that.
Oh, okay, okay, so just, I was just, that was the first question, and then the second one was around, um, similar to the Spencer Trust and talking about emergency funds for funds for folks who may be in crisis or people who may have medical issues. Does National Grid have any kind of program for generator purchasing for people who, who are in financial difficulties or have medical emergencies?
Not, not that I'm aware of, no. But that, that's something that maybe Office of Energy Resources or the State PUC Division, maybe they have something, but from National Grid that I'm aware of, we don't have that.
Okay, all right. Those are my two questions, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Just wanted, wanted to relay a question that was put in the Q and A chat bubble, which was just, every time there's an outage, cellular service is down in town. Can the cell tower be made fail-safe with redundancy and backup? I'm not sure if that's a, a National Grid question, a town question, or a mobile network question, but I thought I'd relay it.
Uh, no, I'm not familiar with that. I, I do have contacts at Verizon, but I don't know if that's a Verizon tower or something else. I can send that to my contact at Verizon to see if that is something that they are aware of or familiar with. But that'd be the extent of what I'd be able to do at this time for that specific question.
Thank you.
But I think, I think if you, if, but if the town does find out the specific location, the address, again, as I work with the municipality, me as a liaison or somebody else being assigned, again, we, we try to make sure that somebody is assigned to municipality. If that's, if that is a priority for the town, that is something to kind of work with that liaison to make it as one of the town's priorities, aside from the pump stations, the library that serves as a senior center and so forth. So I think that's the information we want to hear from the municipality during major events, if it helps.
Anyone else from the council? And seeing none from the public? Thank you very much, Jac, for coming in. We really appreciate a lot of, lot of data, a lot of information. We're going to have to learn more about this, I guess, in the next few months and appreciate you following up with, with Jim on those points that you mentioned. And we'll hopefully learn more about this and what we can do.
No, thank, thank you for having me again. Jim has my contact information, whatever's needed from the town until then. I hope we have a quiet, a quiet period until then, but again, the municipality has my contact information and I hope to have a proper haircut for the next meeting. So thank you for, for having me, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, bye everyone.
Bye. Before we move on to our next item on the agenda, I meant to mention this earlier in the meeting. I've gotten a number of emails and all of us had about flag policy and the flag. I want to point out something so that folks aren't disappointed. We won't be having a substantive discussion about the flag policy at this meeting. On our agenda, towards the end of our agenda, you'll see that there's an introduction of a flag policy ordinance. Typically, the way that that worked, I mean, by our charter, the way that works is we introduce that at this meeting, but we hold a public hearing later. And, and so there will be a public hearing, assuming that this gets introduced, this flag policy gets introduced. There will be a public hearing, there will be an opportunity to be heard on that. But usually, the way that those introductions go is someone will say, make a motion to introduce item 2020 dash 26 and set a public hearing for February 1. That's usually the, the extent of it. It, it's possible we have a little more, but in any case, if this is going to be a flag policy, it will be heard in full at our February meeting. Otherwise, we don't have anything on the agenda to talk about the BLM flag or the keep politics off our poll banner for tonight. It's just, it's not on our agenda. So if you're waiting towards the end of the meeting for that, it, we won't have that. And I wanted to give you that heads up. So the next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on town council liaison assignments to boards and commissions. We have quite a few volunteer boards for everyone in the public. And we like to assign one of us to become the liaison, to attend the meetings and to become sort of a point of reference if somebody has a question they want passed along to the council as a whole. That's, we can provide some guidance on context as well, if the council is working on a particular initiative and that, the, the folks on that particular commission don't have that, the liaisons can, can provide that. So we have assigned, set up a proposed list of liaison assignments. Does anyone on the council want to be heard on this? Does anyone want to make a motion to accept the liaison assignments as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the liaison assignments as presented.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Motion made by Council Breyer and seconded by Council Conway. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
You're muted.
Oh, sorry, I thought I clicked off of it. Aye.
Okay. Council Breyer.
Aye.
Council Conway.
Aye.
Council Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on the ad hoc tax exemption committee. This is something that was started two years ago by our colleague Steve Boyajin in an attempt to address concerns that we first heard with the building of the middle school. There were a lot of folks who said, I'm just going to have to move out of town and won't be able to afford to live in town with the tax increase to pay for a new middle school. Based on that, Council Boyajin proposed that we created a, an ad hoc tax exemption committee to look at a variety of tax exemptions. And they have done enormous amount of work and they've increased substantially the amount of help for folks on the lower end of the spectrum financially who, who need the help and relief from our tax exemptions. There is actually on the agenda for a public hearing and kind of their, their final piece of work, which is on the tax exemptions, which would increase the exemptions for veterans and increase the exemptions for folks who are struggling in town. And we're going to ask that that be continued to our next meeting because we want to be able to have a more fulsome discussion and, and get some more information on it. But what I just wanted to point out is what a fantastic job these people have done. They heard of the need, they volunteered their time, and they came up with, it was very controversial at the time because I think there was a great deal of mistrust with what we're going to do about taxes. At the end of the day, I think we were able to help a lot of folks by providing greater tax relief to those who really needed it. If anyone has anything to say, otherwise, I think we can thank them for their service. Their work is, on this is done. Someday, we may need to call them together again, but I think their work on this is done. Any comments from the public? From Jacob, please, go ahead.
I, I just, I saw that this was going to be, the public hearing on this is to be tabled until next month. And I just didn't know if it makes sense to disband the committee before we vote on, on the ordinance that would accept their changes in case any further questions come up or an idea for a different way to look at exemptions comes up or we want to explore. I don't want to keep them hanging around forever, but it seemed like wait until the, the work is accepted and, and complete before disbanding. So I didn't know of pairing that. Maybe at the end of, of the next meeting, if this could appear then, so that we, we knew that it was, it was finished.
Okay, okay. I don't have a last name, but Ann is raising her hand. Jim, could you unmute?
We're both saying yes. And Kathleen, Kathleen, I just started your book. Tell us, because you, I've seen some of your interviews, you talk about...
I don't think that was, I don't think that was a comment from the public. So we, we tried with Ann. Anyone else on the council? I, I'm not opposed to continuing this if folks want to do that.
No, I, I, I think that was a great idea that Mr. Breyer had. I'd be in support of that and I, I'd make that motion to continue this matter until, whether it's the same night or even the following meeting from when we, we take the public hearing on the actual ordinance.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Council Breyer.
Aye.
Council Conway.
Aye.
Council Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Okay, we will continue that. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and act on interviews and appointments. And we have one, two, three, four committees. And for the first committee, I will recuse, so I'll turn it over to Vice President Humm for this.
Great, thank you. So, and before I begin, are, are there any other recusals for the Economic Development Commission appointment, appointments?
Yes, 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 there are. Vice President Humm, my wife, due to her employment, has, has a conflict that is relevant and will require me to recuse from the EDC appointment. I reviewed that with the solicitor and he concurs.
Great, thank you, Mr. Castell. Okay, so with respect to the Economic Development Commission, this one's near and dear to my heart because I'm a former member of that commission. I'm thrilled to see so many applicants and especially so many highly qualified applicants. So we're going to give everyone an opportunity to make a presentation. There are two sets of interviewees. There are interviewees who have not yet given a, a presentation at a town council meeting. We'll hear from those folks first in alphabetical order. And then there's a group of folks who have already interviewed, but in fairness, we'll give them another opportunity to present before the new council. So the first name on the list is John Akari.
Mr. Akari.
Great, thank you. So, so Mr. Akari, can you just tell us about yourself and what you think you can bring to the EDC?
Sure. So my, my professional experience, I've been the chief financial officer for a number of publicly and privately held companies in Massachusetts for the past 30 years. And in my capacity as a CFO, actually, it extended beyond that. Virtually all of the companies that I was CFO for, you know, I would take care of the HR functions, the legal functions, real estate. And so I'm pretty much a comprehensive executive, but specifically with the title of chief financial officer. I'm now a retired executive. I retired two years ago. And I'm looking for the opportunity to give back to a town. My wife and I, you know, we're new to, we're new to Barrington. We moved here, Patty and I, last February. She's originally from Cranston, she's the one who recommended Barrington, and we're both very happy she did because it's a community not unlike the community we left in Massachusetts, which was Medfield, Massachusetts, and they're quite comparable in terms of the people I've met, the nature of this meeting, all of the exposure we've had over the last nine, 10 months, even with, you know, notwithstanding COVID. And so as a retired executive, my momentum here is to give back to the community and I would welcome that opportunity. And I think what I have to offer is those 30 years of experience, pretty diversified across a number of industries and, you know, into all of the functions of a company. Does that give you an overview?
No, I, I think that's very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Akari.
I'd be happy to take any...
Are there any questions for any, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yeah, great. So are, are there any questions from anybody? No? Okay. So thank you, Mr. Akari. Just so you know and all the other presenters know, we're going to be voting at the end of all of the presentations, so we'll give everybody an opportunity to speak first. So thank you for your willingness to serve and, and sit tight, and we'll be voting momentarily.
Okay, thank you.
So the next name on the list is Kathleen Barard.
Hi, yes. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. So welcome, Ms. Barard. And why don't you tell us a bit about yourself and what you think you can bring to the EDC?
Sure. So I thought to join this committee really from a background in my family of public service on planning boards and town committees growing up. I'm not originally from Rhode Island, I'm from Westfield, New Jersey, which is kind of pairs itself equally, I think, to this town minus the water, which is really a love of ours. We recently purchased a house in the Hampton Meadows area. Our son goes to kindergarten at Sohams. I really think what I can offer the committee is twofold. One is my background, I'm an attorney, like many members of, of this council and on, on various boards. So I feel like I have a good understanding as to the interplays of commercial tendencies and, you know, business arrangements. Professionally, I am licensed in Massachusetts, so most of my work is there. And then I'm also a real estate broker with a, a focus in commercial. And what I think that helps with is that I understand the players that are involved here. I, I think that my biggest gift in, in my job and personally is that I have a good understanding of how each side needs to play off of each other. I do really well with mediating issues. I myself luckily opened my own law firm in Jan, January of last year and, like many people, needed to understand how it was I was going to pivot with two small children and two working members of my household. And so I was able to, to utilize the skills I have, the network that I have, that I really think is probably my strongest suit, to branch back into real estate, to try to pivot the type of work I was doing, to work with my landlord in order to find more favorable, you know, situation for myself. It also allowed me to have that personal experience to work with my clients and, and mediate any issues for tenants that I had or, or people who were purchasing businesses. I just think professionally and personally, I would be able to give in that realm. But most importantly is I want to invest in the town that I live in. We chose here for a reason, for the schools, for the community, for the walkability, for the bike path. And I'd really love to see Barrington build itself up in a way that Warren has, which is where we lived previous to moving to Barrington. And I think I would offer an even-handed space on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members for Ms. Barard? Okay, well, seeing none, as I just mentioned, we'll be voting at the end, so thank you for your willingness to serve and, and sit tight, and we'll be voting shortly.
Mr. Vice President, Daniel Kaplan has withdrawn his application.
That's correct. Okay, so thank you. So we'll move past Mr. Kaplan and the next applicant is Michael J. Raposa. Okay, hi, Mr. Raposa.
Hi.
So like I, like I've asked the other applicants, tell us a bit about yourself and what you think you can bring to the EDC.
Yeah, in fairness, I, I applied to the EDC, the planning board and the zoning board. And I don't plan on serving on all three. Basically, I was reading the Barrington Times every week and I saw a huge demand for need of seats to be filled on the various boards. So I put an application in and I would be more than happy to serve on any three of those boards. And the reason I applied is I grew up in this town, I love this town. I just moved back with my wife and my daughter in November. Greatest town in America, as far as I'm concerned. And I just wanted to help, simply put. I saw the need each week in the Barrington Times and every week it was rolling over and they were looking for applicants, looking for applicants. And I said, well, this is a sign, I should apply and, and do my part to help the town. So that was why I applied. Like I said, I grew up in Barrington. And professionally, I run a small business. We do insurance and retirement planning, wealth management planning. Our, our team's based in Boston, so I've got a team of four people. And I've done that since I graduated college back in 2007. So I've got good experience in managing a team, in marketing, sales, client development... So I've got good experience in managing a team, um in marketing, sales, um client development. So I think I'd be a great fit on the Economic Development Commission. Uh, with that being said, uh I'd be happy to take a uh a a role or an opportunity on one of the other boards as well. Like I said, I I really just want to help the town and uh and and give a hand now that I'm back here um after being gone for the last fifteen, sixteen years.
Great, thank you, Mr. Raposa. Are there any questions from council members for Mr. Raposa? Okay, so as you've heard, uh we'll be voting shortly. Um, so thank you for uh for your willingness to serve and everything that you've said, uh and sit tight. Uh, before we move to our next one, I'm gonna do this out of order only because I'll forget if we don't. Um, there was a a note in the chat um from Douglas Cato, who is one of the applicants uh for the EDC. And Mr. Cato indicated that he is withdrawing his application. Um, if that's not the case, we'll we'll call you as you come, but um I wanted to note that because I would certainly forget that. Um, so the next name on the list is Eric Sueberg. Mr. Sueberg, I think I see you down there.
Yep, I'm here. I don't know if I'm vis- visible to the committee, but uh good evening to all. Um, uh let me start by saying that I've been a resident of Barrington now for about thirty-two years. And haven't been at all active in um town affairs. Uh, I'm a professor of engineering at Brown, which has kept me plenty busy for all of that time. I'm also a registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island. But perhaps more relevant to my interest in this position is the the fact that I also have a master's degree in marketing from the Sloan School. And that led to my co-founding of the program in uh innovation management and entrepreneurship at Brown. That's a master's program for students who have a uh technical background but are interested in the process of starting uh a business for themselves. So I taught in that program for something over a dozen years. In addition to to that work, um I've been active as a consultant to small firms and as an expert witness in litigation matters related to environmental pollution. My own research interests are in the environmental and energy areas. But to to sum up my my interest in this position, it's it's just that I I've been interested in the process of economic development in the technology area throughout my academic career. And when a neighbor saw the the advertisement for several openings on this committee, it suggested that gee, isn't it about time that I took a step to to do something for the town in that direction? And so I'm happy to offer my services if uh uh the council feels they would be of value. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Sueberg. Any questions from any of the council members? Nope, okay. Uh, so thank you for your willingness to serve, and uh as I told the other applicants, we will be voting shortly. So next on the list, um now we're getting into some applicants who have already presented, but I want to give them an opportunity to present to the new board. Uh, so the first name is Brian Baker. Is Mr. Baker here tonight?
I don't see him, Mr. Vice President. If he is here, could he raise his hand? He could be on one of the phone numbers. Or speak up.
Okay, so since Mr. Baker's not here, um we'll move to the next applicant. I'll call his name at the end just in case there was a glitch. Um, but I'm not aware of him formally withdrawing, so his name will still be in the mix um unless we hear otherwise. Uh, next was Mr. Cato, and again, I understand that Mr. Cato has uh withdrawn his application. Uh, the next name on the list is Kaz DiCarvalo. Is Mr. DiCarvalo here?
I don't see him uh raising his hand or on the list.
Okay, so uh we'll mention Mr. DiCarvalo at the end of the list also. Next name on the list is Mariana Silva Buck. Ms. Silva Buck, are you here tonight?
Her hand is raised, Jim.
Okay, there it is. I see it.
You know, too.
I'm here.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Silva Buck. I should say welcome back, Ms. Silva Buck, because I know you've already presented. So I'll ask you the same questions I've asked everybody else. Uh, tell us a bit about yourself and what you can bring to the EDC.
Well, hi, everybody. I'm Mariana, and I've moved to Barrington about two years ago with my daughter. And I do have a small business in town, which is, I know firsthand how hard it has been for everybody to pivot and to move, especially with online school going on, and as a single parent, it's even a much bigger challenge. Um, my background is in in business development and marketing. I have a degree in communications, visual arts, and also an MBA. Um, specifically with the management and entrepreneurship development. Um, that has been my passion for for a very long time. I also serve on the planning board in town. And one of the many things that we've seen and discussing with the planning board crosses over with the Economic Development Board. Right now, I actually have um a couple of projects also that I've been trying to to push and move. One of them is promoting and pushing to have the police cove turning into welcoming food trucks to come into town and to allow business in town to maybe even having food pop up. So that's already something that I'm trying to work on with um the planning board for the spring and summer. So I do already have projects that I would like to bring onto the Economic Development Board. And as a minority woman, I think that's much needed for the board to also create and bring some equity and diversity to the board. And that's lacking severely. So I would definitely appreciate the opportunity to to serve and perhaps connect the two boards. Um, that is much needed to make, you know, to serve the town better um by making that connection.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Silva Buck. Any questions from the council members at this point? Nothing, so we're not gonna break tradition. You still have no questions. Um, as I mentioned, we'll be voting at the end, so thank you for your willingness to serve and sit tight. And uh I think we only have one more presenter before we can vote. So the last presenter for tonight, unless uh some of the other two pop up, uh we have Sierra Barter Terry. Is Miss Barter Terry here? So I don't see Miss Barter Terry yet, but I do see a note that Mr. Baker has arrived or is arriving soon. Um, so we'll give one more call for Miss Barter Terry before we move on. Does anybody see her name or her hand?
I don't see it anywhere, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, so we will um pass on Miss Barter Terry for the moment, too. Um, but subject to the notes that apparently Mr. Baker, and um I also saw a note that Mr. DiCarvalo um are both either, they either have joined or they are joining. So we'll start with Mr. Baker. Is Brian Baker here now? How about Mr. DiCarvalo? Is Mr. DiCarvalo here now?
I see Mr. Baker.
Great. So Mr. Baker, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yep, I can hear you okay.
Great, thank you, and thank you for joining. Um, so I I don't know if you heard uh what I had said at the beginning of um this section, but we're giving everybody an opportunity to present again, even though some folks have presented at the last meeting. Um, so I think now it's your turn to tell us a bit about yourself and what you can bring to the EDC.
Yeah, yeah, again, I apologize for the for the for jumping on late. I wasn't aware this meeting was happening, so I appreciate you guys giving me a chance to speak. So uh so yeah, um I've uh I recently relocated to Barrington from um a small town called Lake Oswego, Oregon. Um, it's a little over a year ago, so it was October twenty nineteen. Um, I've got a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering and a master's degree in business. Uh, I spent seventeen years at Nike in various roles from engineering, innovation, product development, um and general management, and uh recently relocated with my family to Rhode Island to uh take a job at Hasbro, where I lead the product design and development team for Hasbro Gaming. So working on the next Monopoly and Connect Four and all the classic games you've probably been playing since you've been stuck at home. Um, one of the reasons why I was interested in joining um the EDC is that uh um the community I relocated from from Oregon is very similar to Barrington with regards to the demographics, I think the the people, um and its proximity to a larger city. And uh it underwent a pretty dramatic transformation while I was a resident there and learned a lot about uh how they attracted businesses and established a vibrant and uh um, you know, vibrant downtown community. Um, you know, I think there's a there's a lot of uh people in Barrington who I think have a lot of great experience and a lot to contribute. I think what sets me apart from many of the other candidates is that I am new to the area. Um, and I could bring perhaps a different perspective, um and some different learnings. Um, although I did grow up um just outside of New York City in Westchester County, college in Chicago, time on the West Coast, and then completed the round trip back east uh with this move to Barrington. So super excited to be here. I think for me, it's a priority to contribute and offer some of my background and skills back to the community. Um, and again, a different perspective from someone from some uh someone from outside and would be really excited to contribute however possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker. Any questions from the council members? Okay, uh Mr. Baker, thanks for your presentation. Um, we're gonna vote at the end of the presentation, so sit tight. But in the meantime, thanks for your willingness to serve. We appreciate it.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
So the next name we'll revisit before we close it out is, has Kaz DiCarvalo from the meeting?
I do not see him.
Okay. Has Sierra Barter Terry joined the meeting? All right. So in that case, we'll close the presentations. Um, thanks so much to everybody. Um, we will now open up council discussion with respect to the applicants. Uh, I believe we have six applicants for three spots, if my math serves me correct, which it usually does not. So are there any comments or any nominations?
I was just curious if the people who had applied in the past were contacted directly about tonight's meeting. Okay. Um, I would like to nominate Mariana Silva Buck for um a term ending January thirty-first, uh two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, and I I if if I can comment on that, um I agree with that nomination. Um, as Mariana mentioned her work on the planning board, I've worked directly with her for the last couple of years. Um, I think Mariana would be an excellent choice. Uh, she mentioned she's a local business owner. Uh, her spokesman is probably the cutest spokesman you can uh you can find at a local business. Um, so I think that's terrific, and um she pops into the meetings every now and then, which is which is fun. Um, she's expressed to me over the the past at least six months, probably more, her interest in the EDC and um some of the ideas that she has to support the small businesses. So I think she's an excellent choice, and um I I couldn't agree more with that.
Yeah, I I met her shortly after she moved here, and um when we spoke, I immediately thought she would be a good fit for the EDC. But it took a while before there were openings, and as we can see from the um from the turnout for this, it's a it's a highly sought-after volunteer role.
And if I can just add, um, continue to heap on to the I the um suggestion that Mariana would be a perfect fit for this role. I think as a small business owner with creative ideas and obviously she's inspired and um has already come up with solutions to some of the problems that we may have. Um, and has, like she said, been challenged with COVID and the pivot and um has lived these experiences. I think we're gonna bring more small businesses to town, and having someone who's gone through that would be a terrific addition to the board. So I know we probably don't need a second, but I would I would second that.
Yeah, no, no, thank you for the comments. My understanding is the same. I don't think we need a second for nominations and appointments, so um why don't we go right to the vote? Um, how do you vote? Uh, we'll start with Ms. Conway.
Aye.
Mr. Brier?
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. So congratulations, Ms. Silva Buck. So we have two more vacancies to fill. Um, are there any other uh suggestions or points of discussion? I'll oh, I'll throw out a name for discussion. Um, one thing I was uh really intrigued by um from the materials and from the presentation was from Mr. Sueberg, um the professor at Brown. Um, what intrigued me the most was the fact that he was the co-founder of the program in innovation management and entrepreneurship. Um, Brown has a very well-regarded entrepreneurship and management program. Um, so the fact that he was involved with that, I think, is tremendous and something that perhaps could be a a of really good value to the town. Um, and I think his experience and interest in technology, I think, could also be of value to the town. Barrington, um what I learned has hundreds of um small businesses who work out of their home, some technological, some otherwise, but um it 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 jumped out to me, his experience with um technology startups, technology management, entrepreneurship, um that he might bring a very good um perspective to the EDC. Um, so I'll I'll throw that name out for discussion and and see what folks think.
Yeah, I I I agree. I think um I think he brings a lot. And I was actually just just before you started gonna ask, as as the former chair um of the EDC, um, one thing we often don't hear a lot about, and it's, I think, particularly meaningful when we have a lot of people uh applying, is what what is the makeup, what's the dynamic of the board? You know, what sort of expertise or insights might be absent from from the discussions? Um, so I um, you know, I I support your opinion of kind of what what can be helpful there.
Okay. Um, so I'll 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 move Mr. Sueberg forward um based on that. Uh, so we'll start the voting in the same order. Ms. Conway, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Brier, how do you vote?
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. So, Mr. Sueberg, congratulations.
I would like to, if it if I may, um nominate Mr. DiCarvalo, even though he is not at the meeting tonight. Um, his previous presentation was very impressive, and many people have reached out to me concerning his serving on the Providence Economic Development Council before he moved to town. Um, despite the fact he's not here tonight, I just think that he would bring a wealth of information and knowledge and experience to Barrington that we could really use. So um I would put forward the nomination for him.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment on Mr. DiCarvalo?
I I agree.
I, I agree. Um, but don't, I don't have much to add to what Counselor Conway already said.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a bit disappointed that Mr. DiCarvalo isn't here. I do know him by reputation and, um, and I've met him. I think he is immensely qualified, almost i- as qualified as you can be. He's an overall great guy and has worked with the Quanta Development Corporation, Providence Economic Development Commission, and a host of other volunteer work that he does. Um, I mean, I, I, I couldn't think of a better, uh, addition to that board. Again, I'm, 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 I don't know if he received notice for tonight's meeting. I'm surprised he's not here. But I do know he's interested in, in the board from what I understand. I would support his nomination too.
No, I'll, I'll add, I, I considered nominating him also and hesitated, um, because he wasn't here. But he was here for the, the three prior meetings when, when we didn't, um, we didn't have as many spots and so, um, I can, I can look past it.
And I, I think that's an excellent point that Mr. Brier, um, mentions. He's been asked to come back several times. So is, is there, is, was that a nomination, Ms. Conway?
That was a nomination, yes.
Okay, uh, so, Ms. Conway, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mr. Brier?
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. So, Mr. DiCarvalo will receive, um, his congratulations, but I wanna thank everybody else who came out, and took the time to, to give their presentation tonight and to submit the materials. These openings come up all the time, so please don't be discouraged with respect to, um, not being selected tonight. Frankly, there was, there were one or two openings for about three or four months and nobody applied. Uh, and now we have three openings and we had eight applications before people didn't submit anything. So, um, it, this was a tremendous pool of applicants. I really encourage the rest of you to, to continue to apply to other boards. And I know some folks are, uh, later on, uh, through some of the other boards on the agenda. But I, I appreciate your willingness to serve and I hope you continue to keep the town in mind and, and serve in other capacities. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Rob, and thanks, everyone. The next committee that has a vacancy, this is for our first alternate with a term end date of twelve thirty-one twenty-three, uh, is Parks and Recreation, and I would ask if Joseph Merrill is here.
Mr. President, uh, Joe Merrill was here earlier. He, he got kicked out and can't get back in. Uh, but he has communicated with me throughout the evening, trying to get back in, so he's obviously very interested in the position.
Okay. Well, uh, I'd like to make sure that everyone has a chance to interview him if they, if they'd like. So, why don't we continue that until our next meeting? If he manages to get into the meeting, Jim, before we finish the others, um, I'm happy to take him out of order. Uh, cause I appreciate him trying. Okay, we'll move on to the planning board. There is one vacancy on the planning board and that's for a second alternate with a term end date of five thirty-one twenty-three. Uh, we've already interviewed Kathleen Barard, uh, and Michael Raposa. Unless anyone thinks we need to interview them again, I think that they've, uh, already said, uh, talked about their, their other applications too. So I'd like to ask for Jordan Durham to, uh, to come forward. Can we unmute, Jordan? There he is.
Hello.
Hi, yes. Thank you for, for coming in tonight and can you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the planning board?
Yes, certainly. Uh, my name is Jordan Durham. I moved to Barrington just about a year ago, my wife and two kids. Um, we've lived in Rhode Island for about the last fifteen years. We came from the East Side. Where we lived in the East Side, we were, I, I was highly involved in, um, community development issues in our local neighborhood. We lived on the East Side and near the North Main Street corridor and I was highly involved in some planning initiatives around the development on North Main Street that was driven by the Summit Neighborhood Association. I'm also a professional real estate developer, so as a profession, I, I build, design and develop, mostly mixed income and, and mixed-use projects in Providence. Um, I've done a number of projects recently, including a grocery store, Urban Food Co-op in, in Providence, um, and some mixed-income apartments. I'm currently building a, a large, uh, mixed-income project on one of the one ninety-five parcels in Providence. You know, I, I, as a new resident of town, I have a, an interest in bringing some of my expertise in design and planning to kind of my local hometown. Although I've never actually practiced planning as a profession, you know, I do it every day as a developer, but I have a background in planning as well. I was, um, educated at the Graduate School of Design at Harvard, where I got a master in urban planning degree. But I've never actually worked in planning, although I've been many times on the other side of the planning board. I've never actually been sitting on the board as the, uh, you know, the local, local authority. So I have an interest in giving back and being part of that role. Um, and I think I bring a unique perspective as both a planner and a developer.
Great. Uh, thank you, sir. Um, we'll be voting in just a minute and thanks for your willingness to serve. Uh, any members of the council have questions for, uh, Jordan? Okay, Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. I, I do have a question and it might actually be, uh, it's kind of a joint question perhaps for Mr. Cunha and, uh, Mr. Hervey if they're still here. Mr. Durham, I, in addition to the planning board, I believe the town has openings on something called the Technical Review Committee. And if I'm, if I'm wrong about that, Mr. Cunha, uh, please correct me if I'm wrong. But are, are you aware of that committee too and, and do you have any interest in that type of work? Which involves more of the, um, more of the, the discrete design work and, um, I guess more of the, the, the design architectural engineering type work as opposed to the traditional planning work?
Um, Phil could correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the Technical Review Committee in most towns that I've worked in, I haven't done a lot of work in Barrington. It's been twelve years since I've done anything in Barrington in terms of planning work. Technical Review Committee is typically local professionals, including fire, engineering, DPW, planning. It's not typically town residents from what my experience, but I could be wrong in Barrington.
Within Barrington, we have, uh, a Technical Review Committee that's more, it's more like a design review, review board. We also do a, uh, department-level review and sometimes hired a peer review, peer review engineer. So really the Technical Review Committee is more of a design review committee, but it also, they also look at the completeness of the application, kind of make recommendations on tweaking the design and that kind of thing. Their, their opening, there's an opening that could be filled by a planning board member. If, if there, if this planning board position's filled, it could be also filling the Technical Review Committee slot if you're interested in that as well.
Yes, I, I mean, I, I would have interest in that and I think my expertise would be helpful on that board. I, I, you know, I'm primarily interested in the planning board. I, I wanna get more involved in the public-facing elements and seeing the projects as they're coming in and not just sort of be behind the scenes. But, um, you know, I could be interested in both of them.
Great. Um, does that answer your question, Rob?
It does, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hervey, for your help as well.
Yeah, uh, that's, um, that's, uh, we've had some great folks on, on the planning board who've also served on TRC, uh, for years and, um, we greatly appreciate that. Any other questions for members of the council? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jordan Durham to the planning board with a term end date, uh, as the second alternate with a term end date of five thirty-one twenty-three. Any, any other?
We don't need a second, or if you do, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, great. Uh, I don't think we need a second, uh, but, uh, does anyone else want to, uh, appoint anyone else?
Yes, I would like to nominate, um, Kathleen Barard.
Okay.
To the vacancy for the second alternate, term ending five thirty-one twenty-three.
Okay. Any other nominations? All right, uh, so we will vote on those in order. Vice President Hum, uh, how, how do you vote on Jordan Durham?
Uh, I vote, I vote nay, for reasons you will see in a moment.
Okay, and, uh, Counselor Brier?
I also vote nay.
Okay, Counselor Conway?
Aye.
And Counselor Castell?
I vote aye.
And I vote aye, but the motion fails three to two. So the next person nominated is Kathleen Barard. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Uh, congratulations, Ms. Barard, and thank you, Mr. Durham, for your willingness to serve. We, we certainly do have openings that come up and, and I encourage you to, um, to apply for those. We, we need the volunteer expertise like you have, but congratulations, Ms. Barard. Next item is the Zoning Board of Review. There's one vacancy for the third alternate. This is has a termination, term end date of twelve thirty-one twenty-five. And there's one applicant, that's Michael J. Raposa, who has already, uh, been interviewed. Does anyone have any say or does anyone wanna make a, a motion? Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Michael J. Raposa to the zoning board of review as the third alternate with a term end date of twelve thirty-one twenty-five. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Raposa, and thank you. Is, has Mr. Merrill made it back in, Jim?
No, he has not.
Okay. Okay, so we will, uh, address that, um, that opening at our next meeting in February then. The next item on the agenda is item eighteen, Discuss an Act on a Formal Complaint, and for that, I will be recusing. So I'll turn it over to Vice President Hum.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carroll. So Agenda item eighteen is a continuation of a matter that was on the November second Town Council meeting. And, um, I guess just, it, to kind of set the stage so that everybody who's participating tonight is aware of kind of the process, how we'll handle things tonight. The first thing we're gonna do is, uh, the town solicitor has put together a memorandum, uh, providing a legal opinion analyzing the matter. So the solicitor will, uh, for everybody summarize that legal memorandum. Second, the town council members will have an opportunity to ask questions of the town solicitor and discuss the matter generally amongst themselves. Third, even though, um, public comment, I guess, wouldn't be required for this type of a meeting, we're gonna have public comment, uh, in the interest of transparency and we wanna make sure that everybody has an opportunity to say what they need to say. So we'll allow public comment once again on this matter. And then finally, once public comment closes, the council members will discuss the matter again. And, uh, at the end of that discussion, uh, the council will vote either to take further action or to not take further action. So, uh, Mr. Orsillo, uh, I wanna turn it over to you to discuss your memorandum.
Thank you, Vice President Hum. Um, as the council knows, I provided you all with background information with regard to this matter. That included a copy of the anti-harassment policy that was adopted by the town last year, the formal complaints that were made by Mariana Silva Buck and Catherine Quinn, a memo that I provided, um, to all of you with my legal analysis of the two complaints, minutes of all the meetings relative to the complaint, and a memo from Mary Ann Olivera, who, um, provided you with, um, information that she obtained, um, in connection with her interviews of, um, Kate Waymoth and Mariana Silva Buck. These complaints, it's critical to note, were brought pursuant to the town's adopted harassment policy. Therefore, the council has to consider the complaints in the context of what that harassment policy requires. As I pointed out in my memo, the definition of harassment in your policy requires that four specific elements be met. And I outlined all of those elements and I'm more than happy to discuss them further later if you have questions. But, like any ordinance or statute, um, in order to sustain a complaint under your policy, it must be made pursuant to those four elements. In our review, we've concluded that the complaint made by Catherine Quinn did not satisfy those elements. That doesn't mean that in Catherine Quinn's mind, she wasn't harassed, but she was not harassed pursuant to the policy that's been adopted by the town council and that's what's really before you. And I provided all of my rationale as to why, um, her complaint did not meet the four elements of the harassment policy. With regard to the complaint of Mariana Silva Buck against Kate Waymoth, that complaint did in fact meet the requirements of the policy. So there's a prima facie case that is there, um, that the council can move forward on as it desires. Another important section of the harassment policy gives the council the discretion to move forward on a complaint or not to move forward on a complaint. And why is that? Well, like anything in life, there are various degrees of, um, in this case, harassment. Some types of harassment are very egregious, other types are not so egregious. So the discretionary language was purposely included in the policy so that when complaints came to the council, you can weigh and balance whether you feel that the, the degree of the, um, complaint merits further investigation and sanctions. So if after all of your discussions, you believe that the complaint requires further investigation, you will continue this matter to, um, another meeting, in which case you will have the opportunity to interview, um, both Mariana Buck as well as Kate Waymoth. Um, if you decide that it doesn't reach that degree, the proceedings will end this evening. So I think at this point, why don't I stop and just have questions from the council if any? Because I've provided you with a lot of paperwork and, um, it may be that you need clarification in certain areas.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Orsillo. Are there any questions of the council members at this point?
Yes.
Mr. Castell?
With regard to the policy, uh, Mr. Orsillo, it seems to me that in, in your memo, you, you take, you, you take a subjective uh, standard when it comes to what is, that which is offensive. It seems to me that the statement of policy, um, is contradictory with the definition of harassment to the extent that the statement of policy is a reasonable person standard. Uh, but the interpretation of, of the, uh, of the definition seems to be more subjective. Could you explain that?
Well, um, I think I tried to do that in terms of Section Four of the harassment policy with regard to, um, whether or not the person who was making the, um, complaint fit, um, the conduct that was based on characteristics that are protected by state or federal law. So those are the, the things that we're all familiar with, race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, age, disability status, et cetera, et cetera. The, the way that we get around the subjective nature of the power The way that we get around the subjective nature of the policy is to tie it to the fourth requirement, which is whether or not there is a protected state or federal class that has been affected. And again, when the council adopted this, we're trying to do our best to tie the harassment to something objective. You'll never get there 100%, obviously, however, I think that adds a good degree of non-subjective criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Breyer.
Adding to what Counselor Castell said about the contradiction is, in the first paragraph, it says harassment should not be tolerated in the interactions of officials, and then examples, and then ending with whether or not harassment is aimed at a member or group in a protected class. I mean, it seems to say specifically that it is not limited to protected classes.
Yeah, and I totally understand that. The way I approach this, even though this would never become a court proceeding because it's a council policy, I would look at that in terms of ambiguity and how a court would handle that. And given the fact that the policy eventually does in fact specify those, that class of individuals that is protected, that I would rule in favor of the ambiguity stating that it has to be someone who's affected by one of those protected classes. That's, that was our best effort in trying to take care of maybe something that's ambiguous or that contradictory language.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Okay, so this isn't the last you'll hear from the council. We'll have an opportunity to speak again after the public comment session. So why don't we turn it now to that public comment session? And, well, just like we had before, we'll take, we'll take hands from everybody. I want to go through some ground rules first. I know we've had some public comment already on this matter. Anybody who wishes to speak will be permitted to do so. We've had public comment in the past, as I've indicated, so everybody will have one opportunity to comment. And at the end of the public comment session, if anything has been said specifically about somebody who was already given public comment, then that person will have an opportunity to speak again and answer whatever was said or has been said. Or any of the two listed complainants who are in this complaint, if they feel the need to respond to anything that was said, even if those two individuals have already spoken, they'll have an opportunity to respond again at the end of the public comment. The public comment isn't intended to be a question and answer session. So sometimes, as you even saw tonight, people will ask questions to the council. I'd say traditionally, those questions aren't answered. It's typically not a question and answer. So if you ask a question and nobody answers you, please don't be offended. That has nothing to do with your question. It doesn't mean it's a good question, bad question, or otherwise. We're just going to take the comment as exactly that, as comment. And the council will have an opportunity to discuss and to address all those questions during the council discussion. So hopefully, all questions will at least be answered through that manner and can clear whatever anybody has. So with that, why don't we turn to our first speaker?
Our first hand-up, Mr. Vice President, is identified as Rhode Island Philharmonic Marketing. If I could ask, I will unmute that person and ask them to identify themselves and give their address, please.
Hello, this is Jack Van Leer, 4 Manning Drive. Is there a way I can turn my camera on?
That I do not know. Is there anybody with enough technological savvy to help with that?
Jim, there's a question that was posed by School Committee Chair Bay. She runs these on the school side. You can switch people from attendee to panelist, and then they're able to turn on their video.
Okay. I, when I, I'm going to try muting you again. And, see, I can't, I'm having trouble moving him back into the participants. I can take the participants and make them, the attendees and make them panelists, but once I unmuted Jack, I'm having trouble turning on his video. Maybe Gina can help me with that. Jack, you are unmuted, but I am unable to get you on video. I apologize.
Okay, I think it would be very important that we do see the people that are speaking in public comment tonight. I appreciate this new webinar system, and I do think it's a good system, but especially the two complainants that will be responding to. I believe that they should be seen on camera.
I will, I will make sure that I move them to panelists before I unmute them, so I won't run into the same problem I did with you.
Okay, then I would like to now make my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Humm. Back in November, this complaint of harassment and discrimination against President Carroll and Vice President Kate Waymoth was first discussed publicly. At that meaning, many people attested to the positive character of both President Carroll and Ms. Waymoth. Tonight, you may hear from many of those same people speaking on their behalf. I would like to submit that their character is not in question. The issue before the Town Council is not one of personal accomplishment, it is one of accountability for actions. Barrington schools have been teaching our students about advocating for victims of bullying. As parents, we also teach our children to stand up for those being bullied. The same rules should apply here when you stand up for a victim. In reading the complaint, that is exactly what Catherine Quinn did. She advocated for Mariana Silva Buck. Mariana was publicly attacked by a council member, a council member focused on pushing her own agenda. This claim of harassment has been confirmed by the town solicitor's report. However, the findings by the town solicitor against Catherine's claim of harassment sets a dangerous precedent against residents who seek to advocate for victims in Barrington. In advocacy of Mariana, Catherine was ignored and silenced. Then she was contacted and harassed by President Carroll after the complaint was filed. By setting a precedent allowing advocates in this town to be harassed by council members, even while under protection of a non-retaliation clause, will have a chilling effect of further isolating the underrepresented minorities in Barrington. It would set a worrying example if a policy designed to protect would be twisted in its first use to separate allies. It would be even more chilling that a fresh Town Council were to act as if they had no institutional memory of their own to use, and instead passed over their responsibility to investigate whether the original incident actually took place. Let me remind you, the entire incident has been captured in the public record, and the actions taken against Mariana and Catherine continue to be justified by people inside Town Hall. For those who think this could never happen in Barrington, you must realize this incident has already been fully documented on video. As President Carroll himself told me via email, quote, "This journey we're on towards a more welcoming, a more diverse and accepting Barrington is one that will be uncomfortable for many and painful for some," unquote. I must agree with him. I, however, do not believe this discomfort and pain should be placed solely on the shoulders of our most vulnerable, least represented population. I am here speaking to you because this town, in addition to being a great town, shows that it cares. We're better than this Barrington. The Town Council's actions tonight can set the tone. Remember, all Mariana wanted was a simple apology. All Catherine wanted was an apology from Mariana. To the Town Council, please vote for a more welcoming, more equitable Barrington. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Leer. Okay. Who is the next speaker who's up?
It'd be, just pulling it up now. It would be Trinky Brechner, and I'm moving her in now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kuna, and thank you, Ms. Brechner. The floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I believe that the discord between former Counselor Kate Waymoth and Council President Mike Carroll and Ms. Silva Buck and Ms. Quinn that culminated in these harassment complaints originated because of disagreements over the Listening Project as proposed by then-Counselor Kate Waymoth and Town Resident Maria Suarez. These two highly qualified women who conceptualized this project were motivated by a desire to make Barrington less racist and more welcoming and equitable. Unfortunately, statements were made that offended and hurt community members. Apologies, some public, some private, have been extended, and I think that the counselors and many of us in the community learned a great deal from the eloquent remarks offered at a Town Council meeting by Mariana Silva Buck about her experience. Right now, there is so much division and toxicity throughout our nation. My hope is that our town, our community, can come together in a spirit of cooperation, of civility, of respect and trust, and with an attitude of forgiveness. I respectfully request that the complaints from Ms. Quinn and Ms. Silva Buck be withdrawn so that all of us can come together to address the crucial work of confronting racism and making Barrington more welcoming and equitable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brechner. Are there any other hands?
I see no other hands raised at the moment, Mr. Vice President.
I think I see at least one.
Oh, wait a minute, yeah. I have phone number 7964. If you could identify yourself, please.
Hi, I'm, this is Catherine Quinn. I'm calling from my phone tonight to avoid any misunderstanding about my internet connection. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you well. Thank you.
Okay. So I just wanted, I really can't say anything more than what Jack already said. That is so spot-on. But I did want to add that I agree also with Trinky in regards to our community. And I had written a statement about my vision for the future of our town, trying to move forward as opposed to, you know, just only talking about the problem. The solution that I see is not that we would withdraw our complaint, but that actually the Town Council would investigate it and learn from it, because there were a lot, a lot of really egregious mistakes made. And so what I wanted to say is that our town is growing and learning, and in that course of doing that, we're going to make mistakes. And when that happens, people need to be able to give and receive feedback, not always positive, but constructive. And people need to be able to reflect upon their behavior, strive to improve, admit when they have made mistakes, and move forward together. We can then forgive and grow and improve together as a town. In this way, we can actually heal from past mistakes as opposed to putting a lid on them, silencing them, and hiding from them, and pretending that they haven't happened. In this way, this would be a radical new image for our town, which, having been born and raised in Rhode Island, I moved to Barrington with my kids about 10 years ago, and I'm very aware of the education that we have throughout the state. And I would like to ask that we start creating a new image for Barrington, an image where, just as Jack mentioned, that we can grow together, that people can stand up and say, hey, this happened, this wasn't, didn't work, and that people can learn and grow, that people aren't silenced. And I will say also that the Solicitor's report is the opinion of one person. I also, when I first asked for an apology on behalf of Mariana for this incident, I was, no one responded. I wrote to Jim Carroll, Kate Waymoth, and, I mean, Mike Carroll, Kate Waymoth, and Jim Kuna, and nobody responded. And then I tried to ask about it again at the Town Council meeting, and I was either muted or my internet gave out. Then President Carroll made his own statement regarding Kate's service to the community. And then I wrote another email to them and asked what happened to the apology. Nobody has responded. And I received an email back from Jim Kuna stating that he believed I was overstating my case, that, you know, nothing that had happened, that Kate's comment hadn't been offensive, and I was overreacting. And I have immense respect for Jim, and I've worked with him on many projects, and that statement that he made was just a mistake, you know? I wasn't overstating. And now the town solicitor comes back to us and lets us know that was an incident of discrimination. Mariana was discriminated against, and that complaint is valid. So we can look back and see that well-intentioned Jim Kuna, who serves our town incredibly and has a tremendous heart, just made a mistake. And so too, I would say that this report, I believe that it's got a lot of mistakes in it. For number one, the difference between discrimination and harassment is that discrimination would require that I fall into one of those protected categories. Harassment does not require that. Harassment is protected by the protections for complainants in the harassment policy that this Town Council created and that the Solicitor tried to utilize to say that my complaint wasn't valid. That the protection for complainants reads, "The town does not tolerate any retaliation against any person who makes a good-faith complaint about harassment or discrimination and/or who cooperates with an investigation of a harassment/discrimination complaint." That doesn't require that I be any kind of a minority. Calling a person who is a victim on a harassment complaint is, that's harassment. The last thing I just want to say is that if I were allowed to ask a question, I would ask this of the Solicitor. In the future, or I'll state this, in the future, what you're proposing to our town is that if anybody dares to utilize this policy, and anybody dares to file a complaint against a Town Council member or anybody else, that if that Town Council member came to you in the future and said, hey, I'm considering calling the person who filed the complaint against me, would you advise that of me legally? I'm looking for your professional opinion here as the town Solicitor. It sounds like what you're saying is that your answer to them would be, go ahead and make that call. Call the victim at their home and try to explain to them why their complaint isn't valid. And I can say for certain that that will never happen. You will never give this advice to somebody in any other way other than in retrospect. In retrospect, you're going to try to explain how that was appropriate? It was not. So I would like to ask the new Town Council to investigate this and learn from it and set a new example for our town. to investigate this and learn from it and set a new example for our town so that, um, people can stand up for each other, because the expectation that somebody who is victimized by discrimination would be able to then advocate for themselves is ludicrous. And harassing somebody who stands up for another member of our community is absolutely unacceptable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Quinn. I see more hands up. I haven't really figured out. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Cunha.
I was going to say that, uh, Mr. Vice President, Maura Mulligan is the next hand up if you'd like me to unmute.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, Ms. Mulligan, if you could just state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. My name is actually Maura McCran, um, for Woodford Road.
Sorry about that. Please go ahead.
Okay, it's my Zoom. Unable to change name. Um, I just wanted to thank you all and thank you, the people who have spoken, um, prior to me tonight, who spoke much more eloquently than I could. Um, I think at the heart of this, um, sometimes good people, we make mistakes and we harm people. Um, and that may not have been our intent, um, I don't believe. And I think as, um, Mr. Van Leeuwen said at the beginning, um, this is not sort of a character assassination at all. Not saying people are not, um, good people who sometimes make mistakes in a difficult world of navigating equity and inclusion. Um, but when we make those mistakes and people are harmed, it really goes a long way to apologize and try to make amends. Um, and so I think I'm just sort of asking tonight for the Council to consider um, the impact it would have of a public apology, whether or not something was, you know, found to be harassment or not harassment by the solicitor. People in our community have been harmed, and I think there is some easy ways that we can begin to repair that damage by acknowledging it and making amends. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McCran. So I have figured out how to see the hands. I'm not very technologically savvy myself. Um, I see there's an Ernestine Jennings with a hand raised. And if we can mute, unmute.
Ernestine, there she goes.
I'm sorry, that's an error. I'm going to be muted again. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next would be Elizabeth, uh, Finneran.
Okay, Ms. Finneran. If you could just state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Elizabeth Finneran. I live at 40 Earl Drive in North Kingstown, Rhode Island, 02852, and, um, I'm very grateful to be here. Um, and I won't take up a lot of your time. It's late. Um, I really appreciate that, um, you know, that really, I've been on a lot of council meetings. Uh, right, I'm a teacher in Providence, so, you know, it's, I've seen a lot of emotion, and I do appreciate that, for the most part, um, you know, there's been a lot of respect here. So I appreciate that. Um, one of the women that just shared, uh, spoke about, and I apologize, I don't remember her name, she spoke about making Barrington less racist. And, um, I have to say, I'm white as white can be, and I went to Wheeler. Uh, I have all the privilege that I went to Brown. I've enjoyed privilege all my life. Um, and at this point in our history, I personally do not believe that we can be less racist. Um, we are either racist or we are anti-racist. And whether you know what that is or not, it's pretty important that you figure it out because, um, we're heading into some very, very interesting times. And Barrington has an opportunity to really make a statement, not just to other people in Barrington, but the state and really to the country, that you're either going to take, you're going to take a position. And I'm not speaking as a legal expert about Mr. Ursilow's, uh, creation, his ruling. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm simply talking about whatever you all decide. You need to decide right here and now if you're going to try to be less racist, which actually, I'm sorry, does not happen, or you're going to be an anti-racist community. And that's what you really have to decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Finneran.
Vice President, um, Mariana Silva Buck has her hand raised, and she's on video as a panelist.
Hmm, okay. Um, Ms. Silva Buck, if you could just state your name for the record again, um, address, and then please go ahead.
I'm Mariana Silva Buck. I live on Three New Meadow Road here in town. Yeah, I just want to say thank you, first of all, everybody who's here, who's listening. I do have a lot to say, so I'll be reading a prepared statement, which was my original statement from November that I decided not to read because I wanted to be extremely respectful to Kate Waymoth as she was being honored and she was leaving office, and I didn't think was appropriate, um, considering that I had a lot to say on my experience and how I felt and how that also reflects with other, um, members of this community who have reached out to me, people of color, who have reached out to me and shared their sentiments with me, who wouldn't dare to say in public as they told me. Um, so just, everybody bear with me. I would greatly appreciate it. Um, and I agree with Elizabeth. And what we saw last week was completely horrifying as a country. And there is no more option of middle of the road. We can't sit here and say how bad these people are when we in fact tend to act like them unintentionally, and then it's easier for us to say, drop everything and let's heal. We don't heal by sweeping things under the rug. We heal by talking about them. It hurts. Excuse my language, it sucks, but it needs to be done. And with that also said, before I even start out my statements, um, I want to thank Kate and Mike for all the work that they do in town. But that does not excuse them or myself or any of us from making mistakes. God knows, you know, if you want to, if you want to know bad things about me, ask me. I can tell you all about it. Um, I make a ton of mistakes. But it's important that we understand to have accountability, and that is painful. That hurts. And I also want to thank Kate for reaching out to me in private this past month, and we are able to share the sentiment and understanding of what happened. But I also believe that things that happen in public needs to be dealt with in public. If it was okay to put me in that position and in fact be, add the humiliation that lasted for months, that needs to be dealt in public as well. Um, so I would like to begin now by introducing myself. Again, my name is Mariana Silva Buck. I'm a Barrington resident. I am a highly educated woman. I have an MBA. I run a business. I sit on the planning board in town and now on the Economic Development Board. I'm a single mom. I'm a foster mom. I'm also a survivor of domestic violence. And I have the honor to share my birthday with the Global Dignity Day, which is October 21st. And one important quote that I started my statement in November, and I'll repeat it again, is that if you want peace, be sure everyone's dignity is intact. And that is that by Art Bishop Tutu. And after what I experienced in November, this community really came together for me, a few members, and I am so grateful to them, and I'm so grateful to Catherine for standing up for me when I couldn't. Um, and also, I am a multiracial, multiracial, see, we foreigners can't even speak, um, Latina immigrant from Brazil. And I was the only Brazilian invited to cover one of the many State of the Union's events under the Obama administration at the White House. Why I'm sharing this? It's because no matter what I do or how much I do, it never feels like it's good enough. I'm always questioning, second guessing myself. I'm really deeply grateful to the people in town who have stood up for me after I was singled out by Councilwoman Waymoth during the Town Council meeting a few months ago. There is a big issue regarding discrimination and racism that many seem to ignore or simply not understand. It is not so much the racism that we can see and perceive as racist, like the hate, um, but rather the racism and discrimination that is unintentional and how people fight to hold on to it, and it's also called systemic racism. Knowing that the town, and I haven't only been here for about two years, has a history and a fame of racism, discrimination, classism especially, for us to pretend that those issues are not here might feel nice, but it's just not okay. Why Americans have this perceived idea that we live in the best country in the world and we should as foreigners, as immigrants, just simply be grateful to live in this country? I am privileged to not experience often the blunt discrimination against the color of my skin because I am light enough, but at the end of the day, I'm still a woman of color. And sometimes it's easy to forget when you're working towards progress, when you want to be a part of a community, when you are looking for a place of belonging. I'm still constantly reminded that no matter how much I bleach my hair, how much my English is impeccable, how accomplished I am, and how much I try to fit in, I'm still just a Latina immigrant, and when I speak out, I'm considered an agitator. I'm still less valued. As much as I believe and agree that we live in a beautiful and fantastic town, and I am very grateful to live here because I truly found my community in Barrington, and I believe that, um, and I have an opportunity to make a difference by serving the town. I also don't owe anybody here any gratitude for living here, and I certainly don't owe anyone gratitude for your intentions as well as they are. Expecting any person of color to be grateful for your white savior mentality is the epitome of white fragility. When we talk about diversity and inclusion, items that this very Town Council or the previous have expressed the interest in with a willingness to understand and work on, it's extremely important to know the nuances of what that looks like. I would like to remind you all that all of this started with me, quote, "completely ignoring," quote, "a project that was intended to be a listening project to talk about traumas and how people feel othered in town." And yet, the very people said and created the product, the project, had absolutely no issues with putting me through the court of public opinion in November, even invited soon-elected officials from other towns to speak on how great they were and they are, and how I was attempting to assassinate the characters, where I was publicly shamed, had to defend myself for being discriminated, and even had a newspaper article that attempted to also discredit my experience. So my reputation in town, when all I wanted was an apology, got completely damaged. And that is simply not okay, simply not enough to just sweep this under the rug. I matter. My experience matters. The fact that this issue has dragged for months, when all we needed was an apology to move on, it's deeply concerning. How can those people that create a project about listening, um, when they not only don't listen, they are the first ones to shame people for speaking out on the discrimination and harassment? How is that possible? Does that mean that the rule does not apply to them? So if we have a listening project where people are sharing their experiences, because then you can't talk about the people that create the project because then you get retaliated or things drag out, what kind of project is this going to be when people might understand, even if it is anonymous, that they might be speaking to them? Retaliation will come. It's a project that has no outcome intended. I watched Wafa cry and several other people of color and minorities speak against this project, and yet, there isn't much listening for a listening project. Make no mistake, I'm no martyr. Please do not turn me into one. I'm not into being sacrificed for the betterment of the town. Diversity is inviting somebody to the party. Inclusion is asking that person to dance with you. What I experienced in September 14th Town Council meeting was, to use this analogy, I was invited to the party indeed, but I was expected to simply be grateful for the invitation and not expect to be asked to dance. Just like I witnessed in September, and then again, when I watched the October Town Council meeting, not only did I not get asked to dance, but neither did any of the people of color who was speaking against the Listening Project. And just to give some quick context, in September, when that happened and I got called out, the reason why I didn't respond or had anything is because I lost my grandmother and my uncle, and my entire family had COVID in the span of three weeks. I wasn't looking at any projects. I wasn't looking at anything. Um, what is more striking to me is that the reason for this complaint is that the person who got called out and singled out at the September meeting, me, have never, ever had any personal prior contact or communication with either the Councilwoman or President, um, Carroll, either in person, by phone, email, pigeon, message in a bottle, nothing. I never have ever communicated with any of those people. I was, however, one of the many signatures that got submitted expressing concern for the project at hand. So, again, to summarize, that was letters that got sent to the Town Council expressing concern about the Listening Project. I signed my name because I'm very comfortable and confident on the people that had shared those concerns. And when the Town Council meeting happened in September, I was the only person that got called out for not expressing a favorable opinion about this project. How is that possible when I was the one who never communicated with them? Unless that was a direct result of me being who I am. Um, since I didn't respond as expected for being, excuse me, a Latina immigrant in town and a minority. Excuse me again. I think I'm going to choke here.
No, sorry. And Ms. Silva Buck, please take your time.
That was a lot more dramatic than I anticipated.
No problem, thank you.
So the tone, and I lost my voice. It's like a dream come true now. Um, so the tone was a sort of, how dare you not like this, since it is meant for your benefit. And I, along with Council Jake Breyer, were accused of being a part of a smear campaign against the Councilwoman, who was quickly defended by the Town Council President. And I want to also clarify, I know there has been a few rumors about Council Jake Breyer being a part of this or starting this complaint. That's not true. That has never been true. Um, it's very hard also when we have a council member who is standing up for the right thing, standing up for people, and then being accused and starting rumors about his inciting or having participation in something that has absolutely nothing to do with him. And by, I heard these rumors before, and I want to make sure that I also stand up for him and for what is right, and to correct this and nip this in the bud right now. Um, my grandmother used to say that hell is a place full of good intentions, and I now understand what she meant. It simply means that not every bad action is done with bad intentions. Sometimes we have the best intention, but a ill-conceived idea. And because we are not intentionally trying to hurt people, discriminate, we hold on to our intrinsic values, believing that we are ultimately doing good. Therefore, we have nothing left to learn. It wasn't the good intention of white people that got me here today. It was the courage of the entire black community to create the civil rights movement that paved the way for the Immigration Act of 1965. It's for that very reason that I am allowed to be in this country today. Because of that act, people like me are allowed to come here, study, work, live, and raise their families. Let me be clear in this complaint and this agreement about the validity of the Listening Project. Developed by councilwoman is in no way a reflection or an attempt to destroy her character to, or to attack her. I have never had the pleasure of meeting and engaging with Kate Waymouth until now. And therefore, I cannot and will not comment on her character since I don't know her. Anything that I say to that will be a misconstruction and quite frankly, not fair to her. After carefully listening and reading more about the listening project. I can now say for certain that I do not agree with the project and I will not be participating in it. And we also had the NAACP who reached out to me after the meeting in November. To offer support and anything that, that I needed and I think, you know, they are watching. And they are very aware of things that are happening in, in Barrington and they were shocked as well. So. One of their concerns was also that the listening project be killed. Because it's just not good and it's gonna do more harm than good. And I think I'm, I'm, I'm sort of the proof of the damage, what kind of damage can be done and how long things drag. When we can't even make an apology, how the heck we're gonna continue with a project that will ultimately harm people in town? The intention behind the project, I truly believe it's good. But it just needs to be better constructed, more well thought out and to have an identified outcome. Um, without a very specific outcome and just showcasing our, our pain for the sake of awareness is a very bad idea. And one that will re-traumatize several people in town. This is exactly what the quote I opened in this statement means, we must in order to do good. Understand that the dignity of every single person is essential to combating intolerance, injustice and inequality. And it must be preserved. The effects of harmful good intention in one, is one that goes largely unsaid and it's felt on a very personal level. As someone who was, you know, competing for an appointment for a town board, which was the Economic Development Board. In that was back in September. I was really left wondering if I didn't get appointed because of this very bias. Of because when we started that meeting in September, when I was singled out. Did I already start the meeting without even having a chance? Did, did I not even stand a chance to be appointed to the board because that was set to happen? Um, and not because, and I'm not saying that I'm more qualified than anybody and today I truly appreciate the appointment. Uh, my heart is really set on being part of that board and I've been wanting to do that for a very long time. But this is what the harms of these kinds of behavior and discrimination that are subtle. This is what it does to people of color, we constantly are left to wonder and question ourselves. And did I do something wrong? Did I not get in or didn't get a seat at the table because somebody didn't like what I said or how I acted or what I did? This is a constant thing for us, it doesn't change. So. You know, I got to question, did I not get voted in because of the circumstances of that night? Or did, was this an attempt to mend the harm? If I got voted, then I would be thinking, was this an attempt to mend the harm that was done and not because I was qualified? So it's not just something that, it's, it's a simple ask or, or, or something that's so simple that no harm gets done. That is a lot of harm, is a snowball effect, is a domino effect, one thing leads to another. And you're constantly second, second guessing your, your ability to truly take a seat at the table with everybody else. My sense of confidence and dignity was shaken because of it. Brown and black people question themselves often and it's truly exhausting. Now. With an, if, if that was to happen, if I was appointed to that position, I was always felt that. Maybe it wasn't due to my merits, it was just to put a Band-Aid on the harm that was done. Um, I don't want to be singled out, I don't want to be retaliated against. Or have anything approved or denied in any of the boards that I sit in, simply because it's coming from me. Um, the good intentions with bad outcomes create those effects. Having good intentions is not enough if you can't understand and ha, and recognize the harm that you do. Furthermore, I now fear, and it did happen. Um, that I will have to deal with reading on the local newspapers about my arrogance or the misunderstanding of your intentions. Or people telling me that if I don't like here, I can go back to my country. Trust me, it has happened. What other kinds of subtle and not so subtle retaliations will I endure or anybody else makes a complaint to the town council? Moreover, I was in shock the attempts of the town council presidents to silence Catherine Quinn and others. Going as far as calling her to trying to convince her that it was a mistake, nothing, mistake, no mistake was made. And going to praise the characters and contributions of Mrs. Waymouth when that was never in question. Um, and to me, that was a true display of abuse of power. Many conflated information were thrown in an attempt to validate the many unacceptable behaviors. That led us to this complaint that was filed in my behalf. This could have been a great opportunity to become better, to show the true commitment to equity and inclusion. To learn how to take criticism and listen to learn. I certainly hope that we can move in the right direction in the future. And the new council takes this matter seriously, since it can't come to a final resolution. Uh, tonight it may or may not. Um, I would also suggest that the town consider this as grounds. Um, for not approving the listening project going forward. I want to say thank you to all the Barrington residents that took the time to be here tonight and to listen to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Silva Buck.
Mr. Vice President, I have Amy Hogarth with her hand raised.
Okay, uh, Ms. Hogarth. If you could just state your name and address, please. And, uh, is, uh, and Mr. Cunha.
Hi, this is Amy Hogarth. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, um, I live at four seventeen Solomms, um, street in Barrington, obviously. Um, I don't have a ton to say and I know it's late, I'll be quick, I just. I just wanted to say a couple of quick things, um, first I wanted to acknowledge that. Um, it feels disappointing to me and sad to me to think that. There are people who think that, um, the complaint is about wanting to. Criticize people's character instead of criticize people's actions. And I certainly hope that people who are on the town council can take full responsibility for their actions. And practice the accountability that we certainly need in elected officials. Um, in our town and in my mind, in our country. And I think accountability is about not just taking responsibility for what you've done. But maybe taking responsibility for what you haven't done or what you still need to learn. Or ways you've missed your constituents and that seems to be what's happened here. Um, I know Mariana pretty well and I experienced her as an incredibly dynamic. An incredibly intelligent human. And it's sad to me that what we seen initially was just. Um, a person causing trouble, quote unquote, you know, instead of, um, a total person, a whole person. And I think that's how racism works and I think that all white people in our country. If they were born in a certain time and raised here. Have been raised to think that white people are the norm and people of color are other. And that's a little bit what I think Elizabeth was talking about. And this idea of understanding my own racism as a white person and then taking responsibility how that shows up. And when it's called in or called out to me, to look at it, to wrestle with it. And then if necessary, to make an apology. It's so interesting to me, the idea that there were other town members who were calling for, um, the two women. To re, pull away, um, their complaints instead of calling. For the town council members to apologize publicly because the actions that they took were very public. And to me, it's so interesting because there's such an opportunity here of healing and connection. And trying to sort of wrestle through a lot of privilege that rests in our town. And we want to make sure, I think, as a town, that everyone feels welcome here and seen and well taken care of. Um, I'm also a foster parent and an adoptive parent and I've adopted three children from foster care. And they are all black and brown and they teach me a ton about racism all the time. And I learned my mistakes all the time from them. And one of the things they've told me is that there's a lot of people in town who mean really well and act really racist. And, um, my hope is that we could just be able to start to talk about that stuff and figure out how we can learn from it. And be people who can grow together instead of, um. Be in our egos or try to be right or any of those things, I don't know, I, I, I do all those things too. It's just whenever I do them, I don't like myself so much, I like myself better when I'm willing to just learn and grow. Um, I'm incredibly, um. Proud to be, um, a friend of Mariana's and a friend of Catherine's. And I also am proud of the way Catherine stood up for Mariana. And to me, that kind of relationship and that kind of caring should be what we want our town to be, right? So if somebody isn't heard, that somebody else will stand up for them. And if that somebody happens to have more privilege or more power or just more social capital, Catherine's lived here for ten years. Then why not? And why wouldn't we hear them also? Um, instead of trying to talk people out of, um, what they're saying. What if we tried listening more and understanding what it's like in their shoes? So I, I don't think I'm saying anything new and I think Jack probably said it way better, but I just wanted to add my two cents and, um, and offer, you know. I, this is my work, my work is, I, I work as a diversity, inclusion specialist in my agency, which is in Massachusetts. I'm happy to talk more about what I know and, um, I'm super grateful to be heard, thank you.
No, thank you, Ms. Hogarth.
Mr. Vice President, we have Lisa Lowenstein with her hand up.
Okay, uh, Ms. Lowenstein, if you could just state your name and address, please.
Lisa Lowenstein, ten Hamilton Avenue here in Barrington. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Um, I just want to make a very brief comment. I'm one of the signatories on the complaint and, um, the complaint came after Catherine Quinn was silenced. In the first instance. Mariana did not have a knee jerk reaction and asked people to make a complaint on her behalf. She felt. A duty and a, and a loyalty to what Catherine demonstrated in standing up for her. That something had to be done because it was wrong. And I think. That's all I have.
No, and thank you, Ms. Lowenstein, and if everyone else can please, um, just put yourselves on mute. So thanks again, Ms. Lowenstein, uh, Mr. Cunha, I, I see that you're on mute right now, but are there, are there any hands that you see?
Yes, I have one hand up, David Neal.
Okay, Mr. Neal.
Yes, thank you so much, uh, uh, Mr. Humm. I'm David Neal, I live at number one Tallwood Drive and I think that I'm new to Barrington, I'm a retired congregational minister. And I just want to say how important I think it is that. Town council is taking this time tonight to listen carefully to what people are saying. Um, I spent forty years as a minister doing a lot of listening and I'm still learning how to do it. And I think there's always new ways for us to hear each other and this is a really important process. And I commend you for the amount of time that you're taking to do this. I think it's almost as important how we get to where we're going as when we arrive. And I, I commend you, this is a really important work and thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Neal.
I see no more hands raised at the moment.
Okay, um, I, I did see Ms. Silva Buck raise her hand again. Ms. Silva Buck, you, do you want to speak now or do you want to wait to see if anybody else raises their hand in the next few minutes? I'll, I'll defer to you.
I, I just want to let you know, I know you said you do not attack yourself, but it's also a Q and A section. On the Zoom and there was like a couple of questions and a couple of things in there, one was directly at me. The other one was robbing, I kinda, I responded to her on the, on the chat. But at the end, if I could have a chance to respond to that anonymous question, I just want to give you a heads up.
Okay, thank, thanks for the heads up, we'll, um, we'll, we'll ask for one more round of comments and then, uh, we can turn it back to you, Ms. Silva Buck. If there is nothing else so that you can respond to those comments. Do you see anybody, Mr. Cunha, on the chat?
Not, not currently.
All right, last call for the first round, going once.
I, hold on, I have Boris Skrgovitch who would like to speak.
Okay, Mr. Skrgovitch. If you can please state your name and address.
And I, I was muted, I'm sorry.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, uh, my name is Boris Skrgovitch, I'm twenty-three, fourth street in Barrington. Um, I came to this country as a refugee. And the reason I was a refugee because I lived in the country that had systemic racism. And systemic antisemitism. And the only way I, you know, could escape it is to get out. And this country, as, uh, Mariana said. Gave me an opportunity to come here and establish myself. So I know what systemic racism looks like and feels like. And though I'm white, I wasn't born in this country. So I don't have a history of ten generations of my ancestor living here. This is the se, a second, um, town, uh, council meeting that I attend. The previous one and this one, I've never attended anything before. And. If I didn't live here and I listened to all this, I would think that this town is just going down the drain. Cause it's so racist and so terrible and so horrible, but I live here and I know it's not true. There were all these calls for town council to do something, I'm not sure what really your role is gonna be. After all this, are you voting? Are you going to make some kind of decisions? But I want you to. Kind of not to get intimidated. And kind of think from your heart, think what, what is it going on here? Is it really that this town is infested with systemic racism? Is it really that every white person by nature is racist? I don't believe so. And especially since I know my Carol and I know Kate Waymouth, I know that they're not racist. And they are anti-racist, as one of the previous speakers said, it's not enough to say I'm not racist. So either you're racist or you're anti-racist and I firmly believe that they're anti-racist. So again, I give you a little different perspective, uh, on this whole matter. And I want you to kind of think and, you know, make your own decisions without being intimidated, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Skrgovitch. Um, and, and again, if everybody else can please just mute your lines that, uh, that you don't have before. You might see one or so more, if everyone can just take a quick look at your computer and make sure you're on mute. All right, great.
I have, I have a seven nine six four phone call, I believe that's Catherine Quinn.
Hi, I just wanna.
Yeah, so I, I, all I was gonna say, Ms. Quinn, um, yeah, so this, this is your opportunity to respond, so thank you again.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I, I believe so.
Okay, thank you, I also encourage the town council to, um, listen to their hearts. Um, and I wanted to read a quote that I, it really hit the nail on the head for me and I just wanted to share it. It's, um, it was recently, um, put out by Scott Woods. And it says, the problem is that white people see racism as conscious hate when racism is bigger than that. Racism is a complex system of social and political levers and pulleys. Set up generations ago to continue working on the behalf of whites at other people's expense. Whether whites know or like it or not. Racism is an insidious cultural disease. It is so insidious that it doesn't care if you're a white person who likes black people. It's still going to find. It's still going to find a way to infect how you deal with people who don't look like you. Yes, racism looks like hate, but hate is just one manifestation. Privilege is another. Access is another. Ignorance is another. Apathy is another and so on. So while I agree with people who say that no one is born racist, it remains a powerful system that we are immediately born into. It's like being born into air. You take it in as soon as you breathe. It's not a cold that you can get over. There is no anti-racist certification class. It's a set of socioeconomic traps and cultural values that are fired up every time we interact with the world. It is a thing you have to keep scooping out of the boat of your life to keep from drowning in it. I know it's hard work, but it is the price you pay for owning everything. That's uh, Scott Woods. Thanks.
Okay, thank you again, Ms. Quinn. And if that concludes everyone else, um, Ms. Silva Buck, you indicated that you wanted an opportunity to respond as well.
Yes, thank you. Um, quick response to, there was anonymous Q and A, um, that is no name. So the person just said, "I hear you're paying. I'm so sorry for that." I was at a September meeting and the way that I saw it, you were not being singled out by council. Waymouth, she was responding to your previous comment and all of this has been a misunderstanding as a result. While I can agree with the misunderstanding and the intention, again, the reason why I was without understanding the context and the background story, it might look like was just a simple misunderstanding. I made a comment. However, when she directed at me saying that she was stunned that I did not respond favorably to her project when I had never responded at all in previous communication, I had never communicated with her personally. And then she also, she did not call out the other people who in fact did respond to her, did in fact send emails and notes um, regarding the projects and those names were not called out, only my name. Why does it matter? How do, how do I, how do I ever responsible for responding favorably or unfavorably to a project? Like, why was she stunned by me not responding? Like, what, unless I am who I am, like I said previously? Unless this somehow would benefit me or being for, for, for the better of me and people like me, that wouldn't been a, a re- a response or shouldn't be stunned by that. So my surprise was the fact that I never communicated with her directly. Or Mike Carroll, to then get that response, I was a little bit shocked. Um, and to answer to Mr. Skrgovitch, I forgive me if I'm not saying this correctly. Um, I think it's, it's very important that we understand the context of the situation and where we are. Just like you, I am an immigrant. And although I do not share your experiences of coming here as a refugee from having to run away from your home, having to move here most likely unwillingly because you had to, that has not been my experience. I moved here because I could. But that is a big difference when we enter in this country and that's very relevant. That even though you might be a refugee, as a white man, he, he, and I came in here because I could, because I had the means to do so, as a Latina brown woman, once we enter those borders, we are viewed completely differently. And it's not fair to say that because our countries had a different system, that now we should only take in consideration our experiences outside the United States when in the United States, that context and that s- system and the systemic racism happens differently than what we had previously experienced in our own countries. What I want to make clear here is that now we live here and we play by the rules here. And accountability is an important step to make things better, not just for us, but for the rest of the world, for our town, for this country and for us, the world. That is a reason why the United States is the example and the number one when it comes to technology. Hmm, education, not so much. So let's skip education. But technology and behaviors and movements, what we've seen with Black Lives Matter, that has reflected around the world. That started a global movement that is no turning back for that. So for us to sit here or for somebody in, in, in Brazil, which is one of the most racist country that you can find, for, for them to sit there or for me to sit here and say, you know what? This is not happening here to me because in Brazil, I've seen black people or brown people being discriminated all the time. I'll give you a prime example. My grandmother, the mother of my father, was a black woman. She died at age of eighty-nine years old, completely illiterate. My grandmother was not allowed to go to school legally because she was a biracial girl. And biracial and black girls were not allowed to go. And the advice that I got my entire life and many of my friends who had b- black and brown grandparents was that in order for us to succeed in life and as, in order for us to do better, we had to quote, "clean the family." And that means literally white enough the family because if you're brown or black, you are not gonna succeed in life. Does that mean that when I'm here and we're playing by these rules here? Do I just get to say, you know what, just a misunderstanding, let's brush this off? Because in Brazil, that happens at such a grander scale. I don't think that that's the case. I don't think that that's how we should go about it. I don't think that's how we should be living our lives here. And no, Barrington is not an awful place. No, Barrington is not the most racist town in the planet. That's not the point. That's not what any of us are trying to say or do. But we do need to understand and respect the people who are in town who share those experiences because they are not okay. And for us to act that they are okay just because somewhere else we experience differently, it's, it's, it's wrong. And I really hope that you would welcome this, not as a criticism, but just more as, as an understanding of how other people feel who are also not from this country, who are different than, than you and the rest of the town, um, people in the town council members. So I just would ask you to not discredit the experience of other people just because you and I may have experienced differently elsewhere. It's not the case right now. Thank you.
No, thank, thank you again. I, I didn't see any other hands and um, Ms. Quinn and Ms. Silva Buck have had an opportunity to respond. Um, I'm gonna close the public comment session at this point and uh, turn it over to council discussion. Um, I think first, I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight for their heartfelt comments and very respectful comments. Um, I think this has certainly been an eye-opening process for the town. So I, I currently have the floor. I'll um, I'm gonna uh, maintain the floor and continue with my comments as the council uh, discusses this matter. So I accept the findings of the town solicitor. I think first, with respect to Ms. Silva Buck's complaint, the town's harassment policy has a very subjective standard. And the complaint alleges that Ms. Silva Buck felt singled out as a person of color. Ms. Silva Buck's statement tonight, I, I thought was tremendous. I thought it was excellent. What jumped out to me was something that uh, she said at the November meeting, um, where she very emphatically said on the record that no one has the right to tell her how she feels. And I think she's absolutely right about that. Um, nobody can tell Ms. Silva Buck how she feels, how she should feel. Um, and I respect that. So the question then to me becomes, well, what do we do next? And we've heard a great deal of public comment. Uh, we have a full record. I think um, Mr. Van Leer indicated that um, that there's been a full record and i- it's essentially all been in the public. I think um, what we can see from the record is that the town's HR department has conducted an investigation. And through that investigation, Ms. Waymouth has put forth a plausible, non-discriminatory and non-harassing reason why she made her comment. And my understanding from the uh, HR report is that Ms. Waymouth um, either has reached out or plans to reach out to Ms. Silva Buck. Um, and I believe um, I think Ms. Silva Buck indicated that uh, Ms. Waymouth has reached out privately as well. Um, so in my opinion, I don't think any further action needs to be taken with respect to Ms. Waymouth. Um, if I can just summarize, Ms. Waymouth said something that she reasonably meant one way and Ms. Silva Buck very reasonably interpreted it another way. There was nothing intentional, willful or malicious about the statement. Not that that's part of the standard, but I think that's important when you think about what to do next. The town has investigated the matter and with Way- Ms. Waymouth has reached out to Ms. Silva Buck, um, one way or another. And I think it's also important to point out that Ms. Waymouth is no longer a member of the town council. So to me, this does not rise to the level of a censure or any other type of sanction. I think the complaint and I don't think anybody directly said it, but I think it's, it can be fairly insinuated through some of the comments, but the complaint was filed for accountability and to make an example. And I think whether there's a censure or no censure, I think for better or worse, I think that's happened. So with respect to Ms. Quinn's complaint against Mr. Carroll, um, I also agree with the solicitor's memo. And I don't think the complaint alleges harassment against Mr. Carroll as defined under the policy. And I think even if it did, whi- which again, I don't think it does, but even if it did, based on the facts, I, I don't see harassing conduct that occurred. And i- the complaint itself refers to Mr. Carroll's conduct as gaslighting. It uses the word gaslight, but I'll use the word gaslighting. So I looked that up. I, I've heard of it, but I wanted to see exactly what it meant. And dictionary.com defines gaslighting as quote, "A form of emotional abuse or psychological manipulation involving distorting the truth in order to confuse or instill doubt in another person to the point they question their sanity or reality," end quote. And from what we can tell from the record, i- it seems there were technical difficulties with the Zoom platform. Um, which I think anybody who's used Zoom over the course of the pandemic or otherwise, I, I, I think that's common through a virtual format. And Mr. Carroll um, bared with some of the technical difficulties and then at some point he moved on to another speaker. Um, I don't think that's an indication of harassment by Mr. Carroll. So overall, for the reasons I've mentioned, I don't think there needs to be any further action taken against either Ms. Waymouth or against Mr. Carroll. What I suggest however, is so that the town can learn from this and the town can be better from this and the town can uh, make itself more open, inclusive, welcoming. Um, so the town can be more aware and sensitive to these important type of issues. What I would suggest is that the current town council attend diversity and inclusion training within the next two months. Um, I think we're gonna be making really good strides once we start working with our diversity consultant, Mr. Mastoon. Um, but I think something along the lines of right off the bat, some sort of diversity and inclusion training. Um, I think it's something we can really benefit from. I participated in, in trainings in the past and I found it to be excellent. Um, and there's always more to learn and um, I think that uh, that's what I would recommend. So um, I'll stop there. I'll turn it over to the next person who wishes to speak. Any other comments from the council members?
I, I have a question um, for my, I want to have an understanding of what the expectation is for our actions this evening. What is it exactly that we are making a motion to do?
The motion would be um, to move forward with the investigation relative to Ms. Silva Buck's complaint against um, former councilwayman. That's basically what the motion would be. Um, if you want to continue with that process and give um, both of those individuals the opportunity to appear before you and to um, discuss this matter with them there. And then to decide um, based on that, whether any action should then be taken. The um, the only real sanction that you have under the policy is a censure. So the, tonight, what you have to decide is whether you want to go forward with an investiga- a further investigation or not.
Are there any other comments from council members? I see Mr. Brier's hand. Mr. Brier?
Um, to, to start, um, I want to say that I'm, I'm disappointed with the way the town has addressed this from the very beginning. Um, we were approached and informed that during a meeting um, four months ago, that a member of the public who volunteers on a board uh, felt discriminated against and on, on video and what we could see and it went unaddressed. And then it was later dismissed during a meeting. Um, to the point that somebody who had decided not to file a discrimination complaint then felt further discriminated against. And she chose to file the complaint at that point. Uh, at some point, a decision was made to create silos of the two complaints, but it was actions at two different times that amounted to um, a more significant event. And in my read of the complaint, it isn't two separate issues, one with uh, Ms. Silva Buck feeling discriminated against by Vice President Waymouth and one with Catherine feeling harassed by President Carroll. But it's the combined actions that really is um, speaks to the council as a whole and the way we act and the way that we don't hold ourselves accountable. And when I read through the memo, to, to take purely a legal analysis of a policy about human interaction and to take so much humanity out of it, when, when that was never our request, the council had never discussed what should be done. And I don't think a town council meeting is the appropriate forum for this. Um, in front of the whole town to figure out what we're supposed to do with something this serious and this personal. Um, I, I agree that based on the letter of the policy and the single view um, that Catherine Quinn was not harassed based on a, being a, a protected class, but it did seem that she was retaliated against because she spoke up for a woman who was discriminated against. It seemed that a woman was discriminated against by both people alleged in the complaint. And I don't know where we go from here because these aren't issues that are so egregious that they rise to a level where, you know, something um, substantial is needed. But at the same time, to tell somebody that they have to apologize creates a false apology. And so I, I don't know what to do from here, but I think inviting um, both people to have an opportunity at the next meeting to publicly apologize to both Mariana and Catherine would be appropriate. And that's where, where I stand.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. And any other comments from council members? Mr. Castell?
First of all, um, a lot of the broader issues that have been discussed here with regard to racism, systemic racism, those are extremely appropriate and those have to be set forth. At the same time, I concur with Vice President Humm's comments. And I won't restate them, but when we have a specific complaint against specific individuals under a specific policy, we have to apply that policy as it exists without favor or disfavor and regardless of our own personal or political predilections. And the solicitor has done that with regard to the Carroll complaint. We do not have conduct. We do not have the ability to know who may have muted or even if it was a technical problem with Mrs. Quinn's connections, Ms. Quinn's connections that led to the silence. And we do not have a protected class, which shows we may have, as Mr. Brier suggested earlier, a flawed policy. With regard to Ms. Waymouth, former Councilor Waymouth, we... The comment from Ms. Silva Buck was, "We need to listen to the people that this would benefit." It would be a natural rejoinder for someone to be surprised that the person saying that did not necessarily agree with what they saw as a meritorious project supportive of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I am not willing to twist a policy, to label someone as a harasser for one line that is a natural rejoinder later in discussion to an earlier line. I don't want to make assumptions about that. And we keep saying, oh, well, we don't want to get into someone's character, and character witnesses shouldn't matter. But the fact is, harassment is a loaded term. It is something that when we see it, we have to aggressively and decisively deal with it. When we deal with a flawed policy, we have what we have. Counselor Brier mentioned that we have a problem with anyone being harassed versus a protected class. I also would note that the statement of policy is inconsistent with the definition of harassment. And I said that earlier. We have a reasonable person standard. We have a subjective standard, both in the same policy. Beyond that, we should probably have a policy that includes bystander protection and encouragement, which may apply in some cases to a situation akin to what Ms. Quinn did. I don't think the policy is strong enough in that way. So I would suggest that some of this comes from differing perceptions of the policy and its application. I think the policy is something that was well-intended by the prior council, but I think it's flawed and it needs to be revisited. We need to have a policy. These are very weighty and serious issues. We need to have a policy. But we need to have the right policy. And I think the policy, because of its internal inconsistency and some ambiguity, can be interpreted different ways. And that that may be part of the problem that we have. So I don't think we get to a remedy because the application of the policy with regard to former Counselor Waymouth suggests that we don't have evidence that simply because someone who is a person of color was subjectively offended meant that that rose to the level of harassment, which also includes a course of conduct. The policy says an environment. An environment is not an incident. An environment is a course of conduct. It's a climate. And we have to be cognizant of that. Beyond that, I would say if I'm wrong, and we have a case where we are going to say that we're going to take a subjective perception rather than a reasonable person's perception. And if you look at the EEOC and other harassment policies, often the reasonable person standard is what's used. And I think that's the only thing you can use when you're applying a policy that didn't happen to you. And to adequately judge something or adjudicate anything, you have to do that. But if we're going to take that kind of a policy, we have to consider that we intend, and I believe the prior council intended to go through a process. That process involves hiring a diversity consultant. For that diversity consultant to do their work, they have to have a free, fair, and open discussion. I think everyone's been relatively impressed by Mr. Mastoon. And I think that there's a lot of promise in this. But I am concerned that with an ambiguous policy and with an approach to this situation, if this becomes the precedent, we could have a chilling effect. And the safest thing for someone to do would be to not have open discussion, which runs counter to two things. One, towards the progress we hope to make on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And two, to the concept of open and transparent government. Because let's remember, this policy applies to not only the town council, but all town employees and any individual who sits on a commissioner or board. We need to clear a policy. And I respect everyone involved. I think it's especially difficult to apply these kinds of things when you live in town with people you care about and you know socially. And I think that this process is something that we have had to go through and rightfully so as a council. But we're at the point where we have to turn the page to addressing the flaws in our own policy and attacking the issue of diversity, equity, and inclusion on a broader scale. We have to be able to do that with open hearts and open minds and not from a position where people are in a defensive crouch, which is what I'm concerned about, both with regard to the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy, but also the broader functioning of government in this town.
Thank you, Mr. Castell. I see Ms. Conway's hand raised, or it was raised. Is it still raised?
Yeah, it's off.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll go Ms. Conway and then Mr. Brier.
So I've thought a lot about this. I think this is a week in which we're learning that words matter and that leaders need to be held accountable for their actions. And from watching the horrific images that are coming out of Washington, as a nation, we have a tremendous amount of work to do, and this isn't any different than in Barrington. I'm the former Comms and Change Director for the PWC Global Google Project, and PWC is a collection of firms, each with its own leader, office, and country culture. And when we would begin a project, we first had to understand each firm's unique culture. Who had access to what technology, what the hierarchical structure was, who made the decisions? And it was the language that helped people understand the steps to change. You must first translate the need in order to affect real change, but you must understand the culture. Otherwise, you risk the misunderstandings, rejection, and entrenchment. And amazingly, what breaks through that every time is empathy and helping someone understand another's experience at a human level. When you know someone's personal story and connect it with your own experiences, you're much more likely to change your mind. And it's not the person who yells the loudest. It's the story that gets heard. In my other work, I've seen empathy break down barriers to end child marriage, to change treatment for infectious disease, and increase funding for mental health resources on a global scale. And I truly believe that this was VP Waymouth's intention with the Listening Project. And I will 100% admit that I took exception to many elements of it. As you learn from me or learn about me, burdening individuals for society's errors are a personal trigger. And I do not think the first iteration of the Listening Project was perfect, but it was a step in the right direction to create empathy and to help others understand what isolation and targeting feels like and to make sure that this town understands that there's a real need for change. With the 1,200 people that gathered this summer on County Road for racial equity, I believe we have a good foundation to start making that change. But all good projects take collaboration, and no one has all the answers. And especially in a difficult and trying time, we need more minds and suggestions to help form a more complete solution. Something that starts out as a rough outline can be shaped into a beautiful solution when everybody is able to add a thought or suggestion. But that takes empathy, and it takes grace, a whole lot of grace. And when we're dealing with issues that are inherently fraught with emotion, we need to give each other grace to make missteps and say the wrong thing and make the wrong decision. And it's the only way that we're going to learn. And I know it's hard, but it's absolutely necessary because we really can't do any of this alone. We need each other. And we need others to feel comfortable in speaking up. On the November call or the October call, my thoughtful neighbor, Mary Jane Begin, acknowledged the courage it took for everyone to stand up and speak, even if they didn't agree. And it's really important to getting the work done, and we have a lot of work to do. And I think that the pandemic and the political upheaval and the general state of the world is increasing the temperature on everybody's emotions. We've become far more tribal than we were nine months ago or four years ago or even 20 years ago. We're exhausted. We're overwork. We're overspent. Most of us are scared. We're isolated from our communities, and we're running really low on patience and empathy. Ms. Silva Buck is brave. She's a business leader and an advocate, and I have no doubt that she felt singled out and burdened and embarrassed by VP Waymouth's October comments. And I also believe that former Vice President Waymouth was referring to Ms. Silva's comments that no one was listening. I truly believe this is a case where we're moving at 400 miles an hour, and Ms. Silva Buck may have missed the reference. And I don't believe she was referenced as a person of color, but as a person who asked to be listened to. And I also have no doubt that Ms. Quinn is a powerful ally. I've watched her tirelessly and bravely fight for equity in a community that's more engaging and empathetic and righteous. And her voice and power should be encouraged and not silenced. And I also don't believe that that's what President Carroll did. When I first declared my candidacy, President Carroll called to introduce himself, and within the first sentence, he told me how thrilled he was to see my work in social justice. He told me that we needed someone with my experience right now, and he was referring to my work on the Board of the NCCJ, a group dedicated to fighting bias, bigotry, and racism in all their forms and focusing on bringing people together in polarized communities. He knows the work needs to be done, and he actively seeks to accomplish it. But the temperature has got to be lowered, and we have to work together instead of creating factions. We have significant work to do, and we're in the midst of an out-of-control pandemic. We have a woefully homogeneous town. Our affordable housing levels are far below state guidelines. We are the least environmentally resilient town in Rhode Island, and we have not yet seen the economic or mental health impacts of this pandemic on our residents. And we need to fight bias and bigotry and racism right here in Barrington. But we don't have time to get distracted, and we have to get things done. And it's for that reason that I don't think that we need to go into any further investigation into the formal complaint. I do offer my personal apology to Ms. Silva Buck and Ms. Quinn, and I think others should take the same route, but I don't think we can continue to investigate any further. I don't think we're going to find any more information than we found, and I don't think it's going to change a lot of minds. Without doubt, there are racist policies and systems that we need to change, and I will do everything in my power to do so. I know that President Carroll will join in those efforts as well. And I'm really anxious to hear what Mr. Mastoon's work uncovers and how it directs our work in the future. We do not need to battle one another. We're on the same side. We're working for the same goals. I truly, truly, truly believe that. And as an aside, I know my decision will not be received well by some. I know my intentions will be questioned, but again, I ask for your grace and patience. Hold me accountable, but please know that accountability goes both ways. And I need to follow what I'm seeing. I need to follow the truth, or else we can't have anything gained from that.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Mr. Brier, you had your hand too.
Yes, I want to say I agree with what Counselor Castell said regarding the policy. I think it is a flawed policy in that it contradicts itself. I'd like to go back to two things that happened the night that we drafted or that we approved the policy, which was just over a year ago. I had worked with the Solicitor's Office to come up with the policy because I wanted to protect volunteers and residents when they interact with boards and commissions. And so it started. Initially, the very first draft was exclusively a sexual harassment policy. And then we expanded it to include all forms of discrimination and harassment. And it was intended to be broad. And the night that we voted on the policy, there was an amendment made. And that amendment is the section now that creates the four prongs that we hear described in the policy. And it seems, I think, fitting that the memo was prepared by an attorney. The two attorneys on the council agree with the finding and the application to the policy, and it was two attorneys who worked together to submit that change to the policy that we all approved. I go back to what I said. It's a very legal and a political view. And I think that's where a policy about human interaction can fall off the rail a little bit. Not being an attorney, I just look at things a little differently. Another thing that was said that night was by President Carroll. When we were discussing the policy, he questioned whether we need it and ultimately voted in favor of it. I don't think he was fully against it at any point, but he said, whether or not we have a policy, we can determine what's right and wrong, that if somebody does something that is wrong, we can address it. And so while the letter of the policy may not have been violated, I'm able to watch those videos and see what transpired in the way that it's described in the complaint. And I see that those are things that deserve an apology. Those are things that, they're mistakes I have made in the past and will probably make in the future. And I hope that I'm called out on them when I do so that I can correct my intentions or state my intentions and apologize and make amends. I don't think we can dwell on this forever. I think it's taken up four months already. And I don't think anything more comes from investigation into things that are on video and we can watch. But I would like to make a motion that at our next meeting, we hold space for former Vice President Waymouth and President Carroll to apologize however they see fit or to speak to the complaint.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Brier. Is there a second for the motion?
Can I just ask a clarifying point about the motion? So we can hold space. And that, but we cannot require a former counselor to attend or not attend. I just, we can make the space in the agenda to do so, but that's just my question.
We also, President Carroll sets the agenda. So...
So we can make a motion to hold the space?
I think we should, sorry, make a motion to invite them to both apologize at the next meeting. And it's on them to accept or not accept.
I'm not sure that's neutral. That's, like you said earlier, if someone is goaded into it, does it come from the heart? Will it be accepted? I think that's a personal matter for one's personal conscience as well as their their own countenance to decide whether they want to take such action. I believe there has been interaction between Ms. Silva Buck and former Counselor Waymouth, but I don't know what that would look like on an agenda. but I don't know what that would look like on an agenda, if you, if we gloss over it, if we leave an open mic. I don't know that it's our place to do that. I would welcome that if, at this point, any individual would like further discussion of this in public comment, then people can do that. But I don't think it's our place to shoehorn someone into what we would prefer their course of action to be with regard to this, although I'm sensitive certainly to all sides. The other thing I speak to is I'd like to refer to Counselor Conway's comments earlier about culture. In a different context, Uber and the National Park Service had policies. And yet they had sexual harassment plans that exploded under those policies. You can have a policy, and we need a policy, and we need a better policy than we have, so that everyone's clear on it. But you need a culture. And that's where I'm hoping we're going to see some progress with our diversity consultant, and I would also endorse Counselor Hump's suggestion for training as well. I think we should be open to that. As far as leaving, leaving or sort of nudging someone to do something that is really a matter of conscience, not a matter of law, not a matter of policy, I don't see that as my place.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. I feel a bit similarly. I think to me, so we had public comment on this matter, and public comment is an opportunity for something like that to happen. I would submit that that's the space. I think doing, putting it on the agenda to have a slot to say, this is the specific slot for Ms. Waymoth to make an apology and Mr. Carroll to make an apology, I think to me, that's a form of a center. So I wouldn't support that. I think if they want to reach out on their own, that's up to them, as Mr. Costello indicated and this throughout this meeting. Am I on mute, by the way? Okay. Something popped up on my screen saying it was on mute. In any event, I stand by what we said earlier. It sounds like Ms. Waymoth has at least contacted Ms. Silva Buck. I don't think we need to force a public center type of a policy. So that's my feeling on that.
To clarify, I didn't say on the agenda. I say we invite them to make an apology next meeting if they'd like to.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second on the motion? All right, so I'm hearing no second. So I believe that motion fails. Are there any other motions to be made on the matter?
I just reiterate, I don't think that I can tell any of you to make a public apology, but I certainly offer my own apology to Ms. Silva Buck and to Ms. Quinn for the circumstances. But again, I share the feeling that we can hope that there are public apologies made, but I don't think that we can require anyone to make a public apology.
So I'm considering making a motion subject to further discussion, to take no further action with respect to this item, but to, I don't know the right word, but to direct this current council to take, I'd say, within the quarter, which we've used as a frame of reference before, diversity and inclusion training, so we can continue to further this discussion. Ms. Brier?
One, I'd like to not join two separate elements to a motion, but two that we have later on the agenda, we are going to be going through discrimination training, and that's what Mr. Mastoon will be speaking about shortly. That's already part of our plan.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for pointing that out, Ms. Brier. So with nothing, with nothing else right now, maybe I'll ask a question of Mr. Osillo. In order to move on for this, do we need a motion one way or another, either of taking action or not taking action?
Yeah, I would strongly suggest your motion that you are about to make, that you're not taking any further action in connection with these complaints.
Okay, so I will make that motion then, to take no further action with respect to Is there a second?
Second then motion.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Costello. We'll go around one by one. Mr. Brier?
Aye.
Mr. Costello?
Aye.
Ms. Conway?
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. Motion passes three to one, that the council will take no further action. So we'll consider this matter closed. And before we move on with the agenda, I know the council members have been sitting for four and a half hours, and some others as well, we're going to take a quick five-minute break, and we'll rejoin at 10:35. Thank you.
Okay. It's 10:35. We're going to resume after that brief recess. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This is a two-minute statement, and it's for members of the public to speak regarding a topic that is not already on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand using the function on the Zoom. When you're recognized, please approach, please identify yourself, state your name and address, and then you can speak for two minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak for public comment? Jim, are you seeing any hands?
I see no hands, Mr. President.
Okay. Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, which is an update from our diversity consultant, Adam Mastoon. Adam, are you ready?
I am ready. Can I be heard?
You can.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. I hope that you're both still on and are hearing this. Mariana and Catherine, thank you for sharing so honestly and authentically with us this evening at this meeting. I'm really sincerely hoping that the work that we'll do here in this new initiative will help bring a deepening sense of kindness and empathy as we grow in understanding and respect here in town, so that the hurt and the harm that you felt can be healed with a greater sense of awareness. And my thanks as well to the council for devoting so much time this evening to this really important issue. I'm really glad that I can be here this evening to hear all of that conversation and also now to share with you an update on my progress of the consultancy. Just as a reminder, in November of 2020, the Town Council approved my proposal to support Barrington in making a thoughtful and thorough inquiry into the question of if the town should create a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, and if so, how to do that. So I've been engaged in the process for almost eight weeks now, and this is what we've been able to accomplish so far. I'm saying "we" because this is unequivocally a community project, happening collaboratively, working with Jim Cunha and his team, with guidance and support from Counselor Brier, and with feedback from each of the members of the Town Council, who've taken their time to meet with me and share their ideas and perspectives about this really important issue. In my proposal, I recommended building consensus in several ways, including me having individual conversations with as many community members as possible, so that I could really understand their views about these issues. So far, I've had 33 meetings with Town Hall employees, municipal workers, senior citizens, parents, students, religious leaders, veterans, all of the present Town Council members, and all of the immediate past Town Council members, except for one who's been unavailable. I've heard immensely thoughtful and wise ideas from these people, and I'll continue to synthesize their thoughts and those from upcoming meetings, as well as I put together a presentation and a series of recommendations when the consultancy comes to an end. The second major recommendation in my proposal is to convene a group of town stakeholders and to engage in a series of meetings where group members can reflect, relate, and possibly reform the issue at hand. Together, we've invited 46 stakeholders, who include officials who are elected and appointed, municipal employees, representatives from community organizations, and residents as well. Those sessions will begin later this month and will be held in Zoom webinar, in the Zoom webinar format. And the stakeholders will be able to interact in the sessions, and all others will be able to listen to the sessions. And those who've been invited, and a description of all six sessions are attached this evening to the meeting's agenda. Had it been earlier, I might have gone through those more slowly, but I think, given the time, I'll leave that to people to read. But I would like to direct people's attention to the fact that the third session will be a community event with a keynote speaker. And you'll hear more about that in weeks to come, but it's important to know that there will be specific, a specific event that's completely for the community, as well as the other sessions that will be set for that as well. And I continue to be immensely grateful to collaborate with the town on this really important initiative that's more prescient now than ever. And I'm really happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything that they'd like to know about.
Does anyone on the council have questions? Carl, please.
Well, Mr. Mastoon, I thought our conversation was very productive, and I'm very, very supportive of your work. I wanted to know what would be the typical format of a report, or how would you typically present your conclusions as to, and I know we're going through a process, and you've explained that, but how would you present conclusions or recommendations, or how do you foresee the end product taking shape?
I'm going to, I'm going to answer to you as best as I can, and I also think this is a little bit, the question that you're asking me is a little bit like driving at night with your headlights. Like you can make the whole, the whole journey that way, but you can't really see the end until you get there. So I'm going to give you, go ahead.
If I would clarify, I'm not asking for substance. I'm just curious about format. That, you know, that's more my question. I certainly don't want, I'm not asking for substance or conclusions. We've got, we've got work to do.
Sure. So I'm going to be making, so part of the proposal and the RFP was for me to make a presentation at the, at a Town Council meeting. So that will be about 20 minutes long, where I'll be able to share with you all the synthesized information that I've heard from all of the people that I've spoken with, the synthesized information that we will have come together with as a group at our hour and a half final discussion meeting, and then along with my own recommendations, and as well, looking at some issues of, looking at some statistics of the town, looking at some broader issues, hopefully about ways some other towns have approached these issues. So I'm continuing to do research as well, and I'll share all those different kinds of things in the final presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Other questions or thoughts?
No, I just, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Mastoon for taking on this challenge and for doing it in a thoughtful and caring way, and I'm really excited to see what you, what you report to us, what you find. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rob, please.
I echo Ms. Conway. I don't have any questions right now. I'm sure I'll have questions as we go along, but I'm looking forward to the journey, and it was nice talking with you the other day.
Thank you. I agree. I agree. It's been great to speak with each of you, and I have to say, I don't know that this will get to happen or not, but I have learned so much from each of you, that one of the things that I really hope that we can do, what I envision, is setting up a huge line of chairs, two rows of chairs, and inviting people in the town to come and sit across from one another and really get to talk and listen to one another. It has been so precious to talk with the 33 people that I have. I wish that you could all engage in that same kind of thing, and I hope that that's one of the things we'll be able to create together, when, in fact, we can all sit together in public again. Please, God, may it be so.
Okay. Jacob, unless you have any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much, Adam. Appreciate your work so far, and really looking forward to it as we move along on this. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on resolutions. We have two resolutions. The first is for the juvenile hearing board. They have asked that we change the composition from, to delete the second alternate. Jim, does anyone have any questions on that? Yes, Rob, Carl, please, go ahead.
Do we currently have a second alternate who would be deleted? I should have looked before the meeting today. I'm sorry, I missed it.
Oh, that's a good question. I don't think.
That's not a format to, a form to kick somebody out, is it?
Well, we currently have no alternates, so once this decision is made, then we'll either be advertising for one or two alternates.
Yes, two vacancies. Rob, please.
And I apologize. I meant to get my hand up before Mr. Costello, and I just, I didn't, I was sleeping at the switch. And I also didn't think about this before the meeting. But before I comment or participate in this more, I do want to identify, my wife is on the juvenile hearing board. Do I need to, do I need to sit this one out? And I'm sorry I didn't catch this one earlier.
Yes. Rob, you should sit this one out for sure.
Okay, so I haven't, I haven't submitted a refusal form, but I am going to recuse myself, so I'll go on mute and turn off my screen. Thank you.
Jacob?
Have there been any quorum problems, or when they meet, is everybody there?
There have been no quorum problems when they met.
Okay, and, and both alternates have been vacant. So if they're doing okay with zero, they should do okay with one?
One's been vacant for quite a period of time. The second vacancy was created by Mike Trent when he resigned about two months ago. So it's been vacant for, and they don't meet every single month, so, but I don't know of any issues with forms.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Counselor Brier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries for, I can't remember when it was, to zero to zero to one, with one.
Hey, don't you do that to me.
Next, next item is a resolution to help ratify the amendments to the county charter. You recall, we had a number of modifications, amendments to our charter, but that has to be approved at the state level. And so we prepared the resolution asking the General Assembly to do so. Any questions on that? Okay, seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution for state legislation as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, counsel, motion made and seconded. Vice President Hump, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye that motion carries. Next item is. Next item is for our chief to, this is a bid for a new police vehicle purchase. Chief, can you take us through this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome our new council members. It's unfortunate that we can't meet in person, and I look forward to meeting them and working with them in the future. And tonight, I have one thing as far as a bid, and we're looking to purchase two, two thousand twenty-one Ford Explorer Police Interceptor SUV police vehicles for the amount of thirty-two thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents. That's per vehicle. Total add up for two comes to sixty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty cents. I recommend that we purchase this from Tasker Automotive. They're on the Rhode Island Master Price Agreement for the contract period from nine, one, two thousand eighteen until August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And they're offering those vehicles for the stated price that I just mentioned. And this will come out of the auto replacement account, capital account with the town. I think that's it. If you have any questions, I can answer.
Yes, Counsel Breyer.
Two questions. One is, when they're on the master price agreement, that means we don't have to go out to bid, right? It's just, it's pre-approved?
Yeah, and when I came on board, Jacob, I started using the master price agreement because, I tell you, we talked to, there's only three or four dealerships that deal with the police cruisers, and a couple in Massachusetts, one in, a couple in Rhode Island. And then speaking to them, they can't touch that master price agreement. They can't even come close. We tried, we called them up, we asked them to put some bids in. But when they find out, you know, we're going, we're looking at the master price agreement, they say they can't even come within a couple thousand dollars. So that's what we've been doing the last couple of purchases. I know you know because you've been approving them. And, and actually, I think this price, this thirty-two four eighty-eight per vehicle is less than what we paid last year. And we've been looking at these bids closely, myself, the lieutenant, and the captain. And what we're doing is we end up taking out some of the equipment. Like we got rid of the pushbars on the cars. I mentioned that at one of our past council meetings. Although they're good for aesthetics and for placement of equipment on the pushbumpers, they're actually causing more harm than good if there is a crash. So we got rid of some of those things. We just got rid of some more lights. Lights that I think are a little over the top we didn't need. So we're trying our best to keep the cost down, and I think this cost is less than the last couple of purchases.
The other is if other hybrid vehicles are on the radar in the future?
Yes. I've done a lot of reading on the hybrids. I actually, very interested in purchasing the hybrid. We waited, I think, I can't remember how long. I think it was about a year. We just couldn't get that vehicle in. So it caused us, you know, when you wait a year to replace some of the cars, our replacement and our repair costs went up. We had to withdraw that. I can't remember exactly when that was. I know the council, you were involved when I, I asked to purchase the, back to the regular, the vehicles. But the hybrids are, I think, awesome for police work, for idling. They shut down, there's a lot of idling in police work. There is no, there's a belief out there among some police agencies that you lose horsepower. I mean, all those other arguments, it's just not true. So they are about thirty-five hundred dollars more per vehicle. So we have to weigh in the cost, the extra cost, and what we'll be saving on fuel and, and some other things. But it's a good question. I knew it would come up tonight. I am very interested in purchasing the hybrids. But like I said, we haven't had any luck with getting them out of the factory. And then COVID hit, and things got even worse.
Thanks. Any other questions? Yes, Rob.
Thank you. And first of all, chief, thanks for your service. I look forward to working with you. I just wanted to point out, I was gonna ask the same question that Mr. Breyer did. So thanks for that. It sounds like you are looking into it. So I'll look forward to some more of those discussions too. So I think that's great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to, one other thing to point out. We've got a member on the Energy and Resilience Committee who is convinced that a Tesla will be the kind of vehicle that we need. Now, right off the top, that sounds crazy because I'm thinking Tesla's much more expensive, and I'm not wild about, you know, the town of Barrington driving around in Teslas. But he put together some numbers that seem to show that it would cost less than an Explorer over the course of it. Part of that has to do with the lack of an internal combustion engine, which saves some money on maintenance. And part of it has to do with certainly the savings for gasoline. But he thinks he can get you a trial, and I'm sure that none of the officers would mind driving a Tesla around for a little bit. So that's something that I think we may want to look at in the future. But having said that, will anyone like to make a motion to award a bid for two, two hundred, two thousand twenty-one Ford Explorer SUV police vehicles to be purchased from Tasker Automotive in the amount of thirty-two thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars, eighty cents each, for a total of sixty-four thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars, sixty cents?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
The next items on our agenda is to discuss an act on ordinances. And the first two are introductions. As, as I mentioned earlier, the way that we do this mechanically is we introduce an ordinance at one meeting and then at a following, and, and set a public hearing so that we open a public hearing, as we will in just a few minutes, to address the specifics of the ordinance. The ordinance can be certainly amended, and there is an ordinance, one of the ordinances, I have some suggested amendments I'd like to propose and get out to you before, well, in advance of the public hearing. But I'd like to start with ordinance twenty-twenty dash twenty-six, an ordinance amendment to add Chapter fifty Budget Forecast Committee. This, this was to formalize essentially what we had been doing. Any questions about this? Rob, please.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say that I'm happy to see that this type of collaboration between the school committee, town council, and, and some of the other people who work within the town. I think this is a good idea.
Great, yeah. So, Carl, yes, please.
I suppose it's hearsay, but, but I, you know, upon good information with the school committee, they're actually looking forward to more collaboration with us as well.
Yeah, yeah. So, let me see. Do I hear a motion to introduce twenty-twenty dash twenty-six, an ordinance amendment to add Chapter fifty for Budget Forecast Committee public hearing and set up public hearing on February one, two thousand twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer? I'm sorry, didn't hear you. Was that aye?
Aye.
Okay. Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, motion carries. Next one is to the, the flag policy. This is one that, that we've gotten, I think all of us have got a lot of email on, and I anticipate a very robust discussion next month. But this would introduce an ordinance that would set a policy, and we can, you know, sort of fully debate that at the next meeting. Does anyone have any questions about this? Carl, please.
The, the one thing I'd say, this is your policy, Counsel Breyer, I believe. You drafted it?
With, with the solicitor's office.
Okay, yeah. The only ambiguity I saw, and maybe I'm wrong, is that if we say the, the one-day policy, I think, and I don't know if this is a time or place to do this, but it probably needs a temporal element. One day out of the week, out of the year, and ten years. You know, you need, you need an overarching time period. If we're gonna say one day, one day within what? Maybe you didn't intend that. But, but I would just clarify that to indicate one day in what temporal time. Because, you know, if somebody wants to raise a, I don't know, a flag XYZ, whatever it is, and then maybe a week later, someone wants to raise that same flag for a different reason, or maybe six months later, how does the manager deal with that?
Well, I don't know if this is more appropriate for now or for, for next meeting, but...
I was asking that too, if it's premature.
In, in my view, it was more to, to give the town manager discretion if there is a significant event happening that he feels a flag should be raised for, that can happen, and it doesn't require council approval, but it's not gonna stay up for an extended period of time. In theory, I guess, the way it's written, he could raise one on, on Monday, and then on Tuesday, he could raise a different one, and then, you know. But I, I agree. I think it's, it's good to hash that out maybe for, for next meeting.
I didn't know if it would be worthwhile to file a second ordinance that had a time period if you wanted that. But, but I'm not judging it one way or the other. I mean, whatever you want to do, I just pointed that out, that ambiguity, that's all.
So, Rob, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, just gonna say, I, I do have some comments on this, which I'll reserve until the, the public comment hearing. I'm wondering if in the meantime, is there a way, perhaps, Mr. Breyer, to get a, like a word version where I can maybe insert some redlined words and then circulate it amongst the council? That might make it easier to show some of my changes rather than orally go through them at the proceeding.
This is Mike Christel. We can provide a word version to the council.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate that. And I echo those comments about the, the temporal aspect of it. So, so thanks.
We have a member who has raised her hand, a member of the public. Ann would like to be recognized. I, I should emphasize again that we're gonna have a full and robust discussion of this, the proposed policy, any amendments, and as well as I intend to put the Black Lives Matter flag as a specific agenda item for the next meeting. But if you can unmute Ann, and we can see if she has something to add.
He is unmuted?
Yeah, Jim, was item eight ever covered? I've been on since six PM.
You're talking about the train on Hemlock Drive?
No, I'm talking about the Barrington Garden Club Certificate of Appreciation to DPW.
Oh, that, that went into the correspondence as part of the consent agenda. So the council read it. They didn't pull it for public discussion, but they, they all received a copy of it in the agenda.
Okay, 'cause I just wanted to make sure that everybody on the council realized what a great job DPW does for the town, and we work with them regularly, and just how terrific that entire team has been working with the garden club that maintains those eight pieces of land that this town owns. So that cooperative arrangement, we really, really appreciate.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And, and that's true. And one of the other things I, as we talked about the, the storm events when we had the National Grid, the gentleman from National Grid, it occurred to me that we did almost have a storm event on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. And when that happens, that means that our DPW is not spending the holiday with their family. And that, that happens a lot. And, and I have said that I think of them as first responders, really, because if, if they're not out there, the ambulance and the fire trucks can't get to where they need to go if there are trees blocking the road and so on. So they, they do a great job. But to go back to the ordinance, do I hear a motion to introduce twenty-twenty dash twenty-seven, an ordinance amendment to add Chapter one oh four Flag Policy for public hearing on February one, two thousand twenty-one?
Mr. President, there's another hand raised for discussion, I think, on this, on this introduction.
Okay, why don't we do this? We'll, we'll see if there's a second, then before we vote, we'll, we'll hear from Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, then further discussion. If Paul's unmuted, please go ahead, Paul.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep, this is Paul Dolcino, twenty Walnut Road. I commend the council for getting this policy or getting a policy documented as we need to get rid of the ambiguity. However, having looked at the draft, you know, obviously, we have some concerns with, you know, First Amendment rights of non-government people and wanting to have their, their displayed banners. Of course, overall, you know, our position is, is that we prefer to, to avoid all potential division or disunity would be to not have any nonofficial flags flown at all. So I look forward to the discussion at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Seeing anyone else? Okay, any further discussion from the council? Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway? Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Next items are actually public hearings. And so the first item is an ordinance amendment to Chapter seventy-eight Burning Outdoor. And I am officially opening the public hearing into this, this amendment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. And is anyone on the council have any questions or concerns? Or does anyone want to make a motion? Counsel Breyer?
I'd just like to confirm my understanding of it. So this will be no change to folks who are at home and have a fire pit or anything like that. What we're changing is now on public property, the town manager can authorize a campfire.
Exactly. What precipitated this was the library wanting to have an outdoor event, take-it-outside event, where they were gonna have a, a fire pit out there, and the ordinance didn't provide for it.
Or a, or a beach campout, for example.
Yeah, the chief would have to weigh in on that one. But I, I don't think I could prevent it. Certainly could allow it, but then the fire chief comes in with his own opinions.
But I do think that this might affect home burning in the sense that the second part of it is all outside burning prohibited during higher extreme fire dangers. So that would be, you know, we would set that. I guess the chief would declare that. How do we, how do we come to that position of, of extreme? I mean, I, I understand the concept. It's been a drought, it's very hot. But how do we, who makes that determination? Where is that posted and so on?
DEM makes that determination daily, and there are websites that the general public can go on and determine what the, the burning index is for that particular day. I think what was happening when Jim and I were first talking about this during that period of time, we were having extreme or very high fire dangers. And it kept it in my mind that even when the general public is using their fire pits, they've got to be very, very careful. And that's why I mentioned to Jim, we should really do something about eliminating all fires so that we don't have to get involved, you know, during that time of the year. So, but the general public can just go online and look at the websites, and they can determine what the conditions are.
It probably makes sense for us to put it on the banner on the webpage. It probably makes sense for us to put it on the banner on the webpage when that happens.
It's very possible that we could just add a link that they could just simply click on.
Okay. Vice President Humm, yes, sir?
Hi, thank you, and Chief said, I look forward to looking, working with you too. I had raised the question a few months back, I think through the Economic Development Commission, about fire pits at town restaurants as part of the Take It Outside campaign, if they can fall within all of the necessary safety parameters. It was something that came up because there's a, I think a restaurant owner owns a restaurant, Warren owns a restaurant in Barrington. In Warren, they have a nice little fire pit set up outside as part of the Take It Outside campaign to help during the winter months, and then I guess in Barrington, it's not something that would be permissible. I guess I'm wondering, Chief, if there are any circumstances where something like that could be permissible on private property for restaurants, so long as they adhere to all fire safety standards, because I know how important that is, but similar to the conditions that the town has within this ordinance?
The ordinance as it stands, as I understand it, it's strictly for residential, for fire pits. And that's how this came about with Jim and I on the town properties, and that ordinance was put in. If you wanted to add commercial to that, something would have to be done in the ordinance. It's not a Barrington rule, it's not my rule, it's the state law on open burning. So, it would have to be addressed, you know, on commercial properties also.
And Chief, does that apply to propane-type fires?
No, no, propane strictly, I mean, the rules are very clear about that, the distances from tents and so forth, and some of them during the this Take It Outside campaign, we had to, you know, relate that to restaurant owners. That's strictly a different animal. This was strictly open, you know, wood-burning fires and so forth, with sparks and everything that's involved in that also, so. You know, and if they're near the water, sometimes it's not appropriate, really. It's really not with the breezes and so forth, so how can one town do another? I strictly follow the rules, and, you know, I never look left. I tell my guys all the time, never look left, you'll never straighten your head out again. But that's just the way we are. So, if they wanted to do that, it would certainly have to be up to the council to make that provision in the open burning ordinance.
No, and Chief, I thank you for the explanation. I completely acknowledge that. I don't know whether that Warren restaurant was in compliance with with any of the laws, so thank you, I think that makes sense. But I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Do I hear a motion to adopt 2020-21, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 78 Burning Outdoor as presented?
No.
Motion made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Next one is item 2020-23, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 134 Parks and Recreation. This would change the opening, the parking times at a couple of beaches. This is one of, Counsel Boyajin, a fisherman, wanted check for the police, the police are on duty at that time, so they can unlock the gates, and this would allow the folks who want to go fishing to go very early. I'm opening the public hearing for this. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard? Seeing none, I'll see with the council members, any questions, concerns about this? It's Counsel Breyer?
Not a concern, but a curiosity if, come beach season and post-COVID, if this could potentially present a problem with more people parking at the beach early before there's an attendant, and then there not being spaces available once there is an attendant. I know it was 6:00 AM already, so if people are getting in there before, maybe it's not, but maybe just something that, to keep an eye on going forward, if it means that people are parking there instead of somewhere else for the whole day. Could be a problem.
Yeah, we didn't, when it was 6:00 in the morning, they opened the gate. We didn't have too much of a problem until we started getting into the COVID, and then we just simply put a gate attendant there earlier in the day, so. And it more than paid for itself in that amount of time. So, we can adjust accordingly. But it's really, at Latham Park, there's no control over access anyways. I can tell you, there are people there all night long drinking coffee or whatever in their car. But for the beach, opening it for, as the president said, was Fisherman Boyajin's way of getting out there a little bit earlier.
So, the only other question I had is if I can suggest an edit that's to Chapter 134, but the heading that comes just a bit before 134-12, and it's just changing the word "his" to "their", just to make it gender neutral? But I don't, it's part of this chapter, but not part of what's already written on the ordinance? And I just spotted it when I was looking to see what we were changing, but it reads, "No person being the owner, blah blah, etc., to park or stand or permit his vehicle to be parked", and just changing that to permit their vehicle to be parked.
Is this part of Section 134-12, or is it?
It's no, it's part of 134, actually, yes, it is. So, it's 134-12 Parking, and then it follows with "No person being the owner".
I'm just trying to make sure that we're not running afoul of open meetings. It was in, this was noticed as an amendment to Chapter 134.
Just 134?
Yeah, so if it's in 134, it seems like we can do that, Mike, right?
It is, and it is 134-12, it's just not part of the text that we have there. But, so 134-12 Parking begins with "No person being the owner, operator, or person in control of any motor vehicle shall during the following hours park or stand or permit his vehicle", just want to change the "his" to "their".
Mary, do you have that?
Got it.
Got it, okay. Any other questions from the council?
I suspect Counsel Breyer that there are many more of those in this very thick binder.
That's why I'm not going to, I'm not going to do them all at once, just as they come up, I'll pick away.
Okay, with that change to 134-12, do I hear a motion to adopt, sorry, I'm trying to find the right one, 2020-23, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 134 Parks and Recreation?
Still moved.
As amended?
As amended, as amended.
As amended, yeah.
Seconded?
Seconded. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Next one is 2024. And this is another, see, Boyajin special. As we purchased this land, we found that Harold Nelson Gibbs was a great conservationist. And this amendment would add the Harold Nelson Gibbs Woods to the Parks and Conservation Area list in Chapter 144, and designate the property as a conservation area. That would restrict certain development of that property. And I am opening the public hearing into that. Is anyone from the public, does anyone from the public want to be heard on that? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. Anyone from the council want to be heard on that? Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt 2020-24, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 144 Use of Public Lands as Presented?
Moved.
Seconded.
Made and seconded, Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. The next one is 2025. This is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 169 Taxation. Mike, do I need to open a public hearing to continue it?
Yes, you should, you should open it and then have a motion to continue.
Okay, I'm opening the public hearing. My intent is to move to continue. Does anyone from the public want to be heard on this? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to make a motion to continue this to our February 1, 2021 next meeting. It's a little bit complicated, and it makes sense for us to have some more background. We should be getting kind of a write-up on this that will help to explain it and cost it out a little bit for us, too. Is there a second to my motion to continue?
Seconded.
Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion is continued to a public hearing on February 1, 2021. Next one is 2021-1, Renewal of Ordinance Declaration of Emergency. As you know, we declare a state of emergency based on COVID. The reason that we do this and continue to renew it is so that our town manager can have the ability to act fluidly quickly when things are required. And the reason that we move it so that it's on, this declaration will continue, we do it month to month so that we can evaluate whether there is a need to continue to delegate this authority. And the reason we put it on for February 9, even though we have a hearing on February 1, is nobody knows what's going to happen if February 1 comes around and we can't do this. We want to make sure that we built in some extra time in that. So, I'm opening the public hearing into 2021-1. Would anyone like to be heard from the public on this declaration of emergency? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. Anyone from the council have questions or concerns about this? Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt 2021-1, Renewal of Declaration of Emergency as Presented?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, motions made and seconded. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to set the agenda for February 1, 2021. We're already going to be dealing with three public hearings. Does anyone else want to place anything else on the agenda? Don't feel that you have to remember now, because you can always contact me during the month.
I think it's good that we're here, because I can get the sense of the council. I think Counselor Breyer and I certainly, during the course of the discussion, seemed to find some flaws with regard to the harassment policy we have in town. The question is, do we want to revisit that at this time? Or would we want to wait until Mr. Mastoon gets his work done, and possibly for some cooling-off period? I'm willing to address it, I'm not proposing we address it. I think, I want a sense for the council as to where we are, and I'm willing to do it, but I think there's some, at least some agreement among some of us, that there are flaws, and that it needs to be addressed at some point. Maybe we want to wait till Mr. Mastoon finishes his work. I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but I want everybody to be on board with whatever we do.
So, let me first say, just because I don't think we've talked about this before, and you may already know this, but when I set the agenda, if there is something that is not on the agenda, and you feel it should be on the agenda, and I haven't put on there, three members of the council can force it on the agenda. That doesn't usually, that's not usually an issue. My recommendation would be that we're going to be talking about the flag policy next month. So, 11:30 now, that was a long discussion, we're going to have a long discussion on that. So, I would recommend that we not deal with this right away. And I think it makes sense, as you say, to let Adam do his work, and that may provide us with a different perspective. That's just my recommendation. I'm not opposed to revisiting it, but I think doing it in February would make it a late night.
I agree with waiting till we've all worked with Adam a bit.
Okay. Anything else for next month's agenda?
We have the Ad-Hoc Tax Exemption Committee.
Right. And actually, we can just put that off another month, because the public, I mean, just the sort of standard order that we do these things in, the public hearing on that ordinance will be at the end of the meeting, so why don't we just wait until March, unless anyone thinks we should do it sooner? Okay.
Not directly on setting the agenda, but knowing that Vice President Humm has some edits and areas he'd like to work on with the flag ordinance, just an offer to maybe collaborate on some of those changes, just in service of trying to streamline the hearing and the discussion we have. We just work together on that, just to share now that I'd like to, just to avoid any potential open meetings, rolling quorum issues, if you're open.
This is Mike. The way to handle that is anyone who has redline changes, submit them to the town manager, he then can get them back out to the rest of you. And as long as you just work through Jim, you will not run afoul of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, and I would appreciate you getting a copy of that Word document.
So, if everyone gets a copy and they do their own redlines, I can just combine them anonymously, so that everyone sees the recommendations and gets to consider them for the next meeting.
Absolutely, yes.
But two of us can discuss it with one another, and that's what I was offering, if Vice President Humm is interested in discussing some of the changes.
Yeah, just, that gets slippery, because if you discuss it with one counselor, you cannot discuss it with any other counselor, so just be careful.
Yeah, and just for what it's worth, I'd be willing to speak with Jacob, but so long as we can make sure that we stay tight within.
Yeah.
Not to prolong things any further, Mr. Rissillo, how is the town manager not rolling quorum? I mean, what should our procedure be with regard to these processes? A little bit of guidance, just a nutshell, would be great.
Now, the safest way to proceed is always to do it through the town manager. Let him be the focal point. If you have comments about any agenda items, send them to the manager. He then gets them out to the rest of you. You now have time to consider and look at it, and then you discuss it at the council meeting. So, that's the best and cleanest way to do it. Having said that, if an individual counselor introduces something, and one, I want to be careful here, because one counselor may not know that another counselor has already talked to the person introducing. So, my real advice is, don't talk to one another, just submit it to the manager, and then let the manager get it out to all.
and then let the manager get it out to all of you and then discuss it in public. Um, the law does say that as long as there's not a rolling quorum, it is okay for one counselor to speak to another counselor. I, I'm just being, I'm very conservative when it comes to the Open Meetings Act and I would really rather everything just go through the manager and you have your discussion in open at a council meeting like this.
No, so, and, and so I'll, I'll amend what I say. Uh, Mr. Breyer, I am willing to speak with you, but I'm not willing to run afoul of the, uh, of the Open Meetings Act, even if we come close to it. So why don't, why don't we just, why don't we wait until, um, until the red lines come in and then discuss at the meeting? But thank you.
And if there's anything else that you think of during the month that, uh, you want to add to the agenda, just let me know. Uh, it's not a violation of the Open Meetings Act to, to tell me what you want on the agenda. We won't talk substance. Uh, I may talk scheduling if, if we find out there's a lot on there and I, I might try to persuade you to, to, uh, put it off, but I'd like to get our meetings a little bit shorter if we can. So, yes, Carl, please.
As such, as such, even if it's 11:30. Um, we probably should have a formal discussion in public about what we could do to make our meetings more efficient and include the public in that. And I hate to give you something that's such, such a fuzzy agenda item, but whether it's appropriate for the February or the March, um, you know, I, I, I do think it's a barrier to entry. I've said it before that our meetings do go on so long. And I saw people dropping off at certain points tonight that I think may have, may have wanted to discuss something a little earlier and had some certainty in the process. I'm not saying I have a solution. I do think it's a problem we should address.
Okay. And, and we, we can do so. Uh, we actually have some rules on this that have to do with when things, um, when things end. I think if we haven't started an item, we, we really should have had a motion to continue the hearing, even though we're after 11. You're not supposed to start a new item after 11 according to our own rules, which we can violate, but it's a good idea to, um, to follow those. So, uh, maybe we'll send those around and, and talk about those. Rob, please.
And I, I don't know if it's appropriate for the next meeting, um, but I do know that Robin Gardner, um, was here about the tree on Henlock Ave Road, and I don't recall which, but she seemed very frustrated that, I don't think she understood the consent agenda and, um, when things moved past her item, she was popping up all over the comments. She was very upset, um, that she didn't have an opportunity to speak and ended up leaving after four hours. Um, I don't know if it's worth somebody reaching out to her to either explain the process, you know, indicate, you know, kind of that we, we've all read her, her correspondence because it's in the record. Um, maybe offer to put it on next month's agenda so she can present it if there is something she wants to say. Um, I figured I'd mention that though.
Okay.
Um, she did indicate that she'd be calling me tomorrow, so I'll probably have an opportunity to discuss it with her.
Um, okay.
We can, we can either leave it on the consent agenda for someone to pull next month or we can put it on a discuss and act on the regular agenda. And I'll leave that up to President Cal, but we could go either way with it.
Okay. Um, yeah, I've got her down there. Um, and you know, in the interest, I, I don't exactly know what the next meeting, we've got three public hearings, which aren't necessarily a lot. One of them is the, four public hearings, sorry. One of them is the flag policy. That will take a lot of time. We'll try and set some parameters around that and, um, to, to keep that going. It might make sense depending on what else we have, bids and, and so forth. Uh, to tell Ms. Gardner that we'll address it in the March meeting. But I'll, as we get closer, um, and you find out a little more, Jim, we can make that call. Hi, Mary? Yes. Sorry, can't.
It says, discuss and act on the consent agenda and we number it like asterisk three through 12. And then it says, all items with an asterisk are routine by town council and will be enacted by one motion. Can we maybe add, um, oh, a little bit more definition there for the public?
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that agenda meeting so that we can just clarify that, um, we won't take them specifically unless someone pulls it. We do say that, but maybe we can expand on that a little bit. Um, and maybe I can expand that sort of standard thing I say before the consent agenda. So. Okay. Uh, anything else?
Who do, just getting back to my point about, about efficiency of meetings as I drag on the meeting. Um, I, I wanted to, I, I do think it's something we have to address. If it's in March, that's fine, you know, but, but I, I think it's something I'd like some creative ideas on and given the Open Meetings Act, um, this is a forum to do that.
Yep.
And, and it is something we're thinking about. I think I would eventually like, like it to be on the agenda so that we can start to propose potential ideas and reforms and, and mull them in a proper way before the entire council so we come to the best decision as to how we can, how we can make this more accessible to the public.
Um, sure. I, I, for the next meeting, I'm going to suggest something. There, there are times when, uh, on the consent agenda, uh, there are things that we'd like to highlight. Jacob wanted to highlight something having to do with, uh, the, the book club. And you might want to highlight that there's a piece of correspondence that, as has happened in the past, uh, a couple of firefighters saved a life and you want to say that. Um, let's, let's think about, um, either asking Jim to do it or during the, during the announcements doing it. Because I think there's some time taken if we extract it out and then we, we do it. So let's try to, if there's something that you want to announce and you want to specifically say, why don't you let me know that and we can put that as part of the announcements and you can make that announcement. I just wanted to draw attention to police officer so-and-so who did this great thing. Um, so just let me know that and we'll put that with the announcements rather than pulling it out and then voting on these separately. It'll save a little bit of time, but, um, okay. Uh, unless there's anything else, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Technically don't have to have a second for that, right, Mike?
Technically you do not.
So, um, Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. The motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all and thanks to everybody on the staff for staying so late.
Night, all.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody. Good night.